I would like to call the July the 23rd, 2020 School Board Meeting to order. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Mike?
Under Email Public Comment, I'm sorry, I'm slightly ahead of myself. I need to read a statement for the beginning of the meeting, sorry. My name is Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board. This special public meeting of the Wichita Public Schools is taking place at the North High Lecture Hall, 1437 Rochester in Wichita. Due to the Governor's Declaration of Emergency and due to health and safety concerns that exist because of COVID-19, no members of the public are present at this meeting. This meeting is available to be viewed live by the public in the following ways: WPTV on Cox Cable Channel 20, the district's website at www.usd259.org/wptvonline, and livestream apps for phone, Roku, and Apple TV by searching WPS-TV. Following the conclusion of today's meeting, this meeting will be available on the WPS YouTube channel. It will also be rebroadcast on WPTV Cox Cable Channel 20. The agenda for this meeting was published on July 21st, 2020 at www.usd259.org/boe, under the Boe Meetings, Agendas, and Minutes tab. At this meeting, all board members, district staff, and presenters will identify themselves by name and position before they speak to assist the public in following the meeting. The usual public communications item that allows members of the public to speak at the board meeting has been removed from this agenda. In its place, Email Public Comments has been added. Information about how patrons can submit email comments is included on Page 1 of the Boe Agenda. Public communications will not be placed back in the agenda until the public again starts attending meetings. Thank you. And under Email Public Comments, we did receive emails from six patrons by 8:00 a.m. this morning.
That's wonderful. We are making, since we can't hear people live, we're certainly making it available to send in emails to us. And those six emails will be attached to the minutes of this meeting and given to the board members. We also have received a lot of emails from other people out in the community and our teachers, trying to help us understand their feelings. So, we appreciate all that comment and all that information. So, thank you very, very much. First item, Mike?
Under Education, Future Ready Return to School Plan.
Let's do the moment of silence first and the pledge. Join me in a moment of silence, Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Now, we can go into the real work of our day, the Future Ready Return to School Plan. Dr. Mike?
Yes. The Board of Education participated in Boe workshops related to the Future Ready Return to School Plan on July 13th, July 15th, and July 17th, 2020, at noon meetings in the North High Lecture Hall. Topics included operational supports, learning options, and employee supports. On July 20th, 2020, Kansas Governor Laura Kelly signed Executive Order 2059 requiring COVID-19 mitigation procedures in schools. Governor Kelly announced that she would sign Executive Order 2058, which would delay schools from beginning any student instruction from August 10 through September 8, 2020. Executive Order 2058 could only be signed if the Kansas Board of Education voted to approve the order. The Kansas Board of Education scheduled a meeting on July 22nd to discuss and vote on Executive Order 2058. A motion to approve the executive order failed in a five-to-five vote. Today's Boe Agenda item provides for the Board of Education's discussion of the Kansas Board of Education's action on July 22nd, as well as topics related to the Future Ready Return to School Plan. This includes, but is not limited to, learning options. On-site, in-person learning. In this option, students will participate in face-to-face, traditional instruction with standard bell times and schedule, as well as enhanced health and safety guidelines in place. MySchoolLearning, excuse me, MySchoolRemote, online learning. In this option, students will participate in full online learning while remaining enrolled at their neighborhood or magnet school. Learning will be paced with all students in the classroom. Technology devices will be provided to students who will engage with classmates and teachers each school day. Parents, students, and teachers will be required to submit a daily signed log of activities. A semester-long commitment will be required with the option to remain in MySchoolRemote or return to in-person onsite instruction at the end of the semester. EducationImagineAcademy, virtual. In this option, students will participate in Wichita Public Schools K-12 full-time virtual school that provides flexibility in schedule and individualized pacing. EducationImagineAcademy will be the students-based school. Technology devices will be provided to students, and learning pace and timeline completion will be flexible. A semester-long commitment will be required with the option to remain in EducationImagineAcademy or return to in-person onsite instruction at the end of the semester. Today's Agenda item provides an opportunity for the Board's discussion and/or appropriate action.
And, as a school board, we are now at the point where we can make some decisions for our district. And, that is our goal today, to be able to give clarity about what's going to happen with the school year. And, we appreciate all the hard work that Superintendent Thompson and her team have done to be able to prepare us to get to this point. So, thank you very, very much. With that, I turn it to Dr. Thompson.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Before, I've got a question. We had, didn't we have some email comments?
Yes, we have six email comments, and those will be given to each of us and posted in our minutes.
Okay, so, we're not going to read them out loud?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't read them aloud, but we all get a copy of it, and they are posted in our minutes, so all the public can hear, can see them.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't forgetting somebody.
And I'm just going to move us straight into our presentations and decision-making discussion items for our board. But before I do that, I would just like to say again to the district leadership team, I just want to say, these people have been working non-stop for months, day in and day out. And, it has been a lot of work done in the background to be able to meet the needs of many, many constituents, as well as our business leaders in our community. And, I want them to know that I see you working, and I appreciate each and every one of you that are assembled here, social distance with masks on, no more than the amount of people that's supposed to be in the room. But I do see you, and I appreciate you, and I recognize that this has been a big sacrifice for you and your families, for all the time and the energy that you have put forth to create what we're going to be sharing with the Board for decision-making. And, we had ups and downs, round and round, changing of everything, pivoting and all of that, and we've stayed together. And together, we were able to be able to present what we're going to present to you all today. So, I personally wanted to thank my team. All right, teammate, you may begin. Thank you, Dr. Irving.
Thank you. And, indeed, a teammate I am, and the rest of the team, as Dr. Thompson has already mentioned, is in the audience. We have leaders from all parts of our system: HR, Health, Student Support Services, Elementary, Secondary, Marketing Communications, IST, let's see, operations again over there, and Finance, yeah, that's really important, Facilities, and Legal. It has taken all hands on deck to do this, and so, I mean, it's been quite the endeavor, but we are honored and proud to be able to do the work that we do. And, we are here today to share with you recommendations, so that we can move forward with decision-making to get ready for our students and staff this fall. So, I am the deliverer of this presentation, Tiffany Irving. But, at any time during our Q&amp;A and discussion parts, we may have folks from other departments who will come down and provide additional information. The purpose of today, we are going to review and discuss learning model options. We're also going to recommend to you a learning model or models for this upcoming school year. We're going to introduce and discuss what we have titled "The Learning Model Decision-Making Guide." That's quite a mouthful, as educators will probably come up with an acronym. We'll be recommending that that decision-making guide be used as we make decisions moving forward, not only today, but throughout this academic school year. And then, we will end today's presentation with some very important dates that we want to make sure that everyone is aware of. So here, we have a graphic that should not look too new. It is something that we did share last week when we presented information about three specific learning models that we want to make available to our families this fall. They include onsite, and it's already been described that this is in-person learning, face-to-face instruction, where students and staff are back in our schools with enhanced health and safety guidelines in place. We have our MySchoolRemote, which is a form of online learning, which allows our students to still be connected to their neighborhood or their magnet school. And then, we have EducationImagineAcademy, and this is a virtual school. It is a school just like any of our other buildings, but it provides 100% virtual instruction with flexible scheduling, as well as individualized pacing for our students. And so, last week, when we were here, we provided information related to onsite, and I'm going to just recap some of the things that we discussed last week, just in case we have some viewers watching this board meeting who were not able to listen last week. So, with social distancing, we are prepared to have specific guidelines for our buildings, related to assemblies and what that should look like, and hallways, and restrooms, and buses, guidelines on what structuring classrooms to help support our teachers, and being able to think about rearranging classrooms to promote that social distancing. We will ensure that we are complying with the county's ordinances related to mask gatherings. We heard last week that we will have protocols in place related to health and hygiene. That includes protocols to how we teach our students about why we wear masks, how we teach our students related to how to wash our hands, and other healthy lessons that our staff are preparing to provide to our teachers. We also will be able to do contact tracing, as we had some of our leaders describe last week. We have protocols related to cleaning, and what that looks like. And so, we are prepared to not only keep up with our daily custodial needs, but also the other extra things to thoroughly clean our buildings. We have stated also that we will have limited visitors to our building. Beyond staff and our students, only essential visitors will be able to have access within our building. And, we know that we have lots of community partners out there that provide lots of valuable support to our schools, and so, we still need that support. But we will be looking more creatively on how we can continue to maintain those partnerships, but also adhere to only allowing essential visitors within our schools. We spoke last week about nutritional services, and some of the things that that team is doing to ensure that we have places outside of just our cafeteria for our students to be able to eat, so that we're able to spread our students out and not have them gathering in large groups in cafeteria or the commons area. We also plan to have menus that provide quick serve items, items that can be easily grabbed, that would prevent us from needing students to stand in line and receive, you know, lots of different options. Some of our students may not be thrilled that there might be fewer options, but that is what is going to be necessary in order to be able to provide quick serve type of items. And again, students will go into other parts of the building beyond the cafeteria. We'll have trash cans and cleanup items throughout the building, so that those areas could be cleaned up easily as well. So here, we have, again, onsite. Fabian spoke last week about some of the protocols and procedures that are going to be in place for transportation. One of the things that's important to note is that all of our students, regardless of age, as well as the monitors, will be required to wear masks during their bus rides. There's also procedures being put in place on what disinfecting our buses will look like in between routes, and Fabian shared how we'll load and unload students, that will prevent students from having to pass by one another. As far as our instruction, we're very excited that your approval earlier this summer is going to allow all of our students, including those who are onsite, to receive a technology device. This is going to be critical as we think about what our professional development is going to look like for our teachers, in order to help us really put an emphasis on how we deliver our instruction. Even with our students who are onsite, we have to begin to think about how do we focus truly on mastering those priority competencies and standards, as well as emphasizing how we teach with those devices, just so that we are better prepared in the event that we have to transition from onsite to more of a virtual form of learning. We know how important extracurricular activities are for our students and their families, and so, we still will be able to provide those after-school activities, but we will also ensure that we are still abiding by those same safety procedures that take place during the school day, meaning that still having to limit the number of people that can gather in any particular setting, still expecting our activities to include the mask-wearing, and any of those other protocols and procedures that we've put in place during the school day. We will be able to offer latchkey. We know how important that is to our families, and so, that is something that we will be continuing to do with onsite. One of the things that I know is exciting for our students is field trips. Unfortunately, that is one of the type of activities that we will not be able to do this fall. So, there will not be field trips going to either local type of places that our classrooms sometime visit, or even traveling outside of our city. Instead, we will work very hard with our teachers and building leaders to identify all the neat type of virtual field trips that are available for us to be able to engage in. Also, I want to mention that parent-teacher conferences are extremely important. It's a time that we are able to communicate with families, and families are able to communicate with us regarding their students' instructional, as well as other type of needs. And, we still will be providing parent-teacher conferences, but they will look different this first semester. They will be virtual versus any face-to-face contact. We also learned this week of, or last week, sometimes the days kind of blend together, the Governor Kelly's Executive Order, and we are prepared to implement that order. We had already started making those preparations related to mask and face coverings, and so, we are committed of being able to implement that and prepared to do so. We also recognize there are some exceptions for some students and staff that may qualify for exceptions because of a disability, or because of some type of medical condition, and so, we will work with those individuals. Another order was related to social distancing. I've mentioned the mask-wearing, or six feet distance, and again, the protocols that we had already started establishing will be seamlessly, and being able to ensure that we're able to comply with that order as well. Fabian spoke last week about our community partner who has provided hand sanitizer for us, and so, we have this healthy stock of sanitizer due to that partnership, and glad to be able to support a local business. And so, we are prepared to have more than enough hand sanitizer available in our buildings, our classrooms, and at hand sanitizing our health stations. We have, one of the big executive order items is related to temperature checks. We already had over 700, I believe, 750 handheld touch-free thermometers, and we have ordered over 1,000 more, which we are expecting to be here soon, and those will be distributed to our buildings as well. And so, what we are working on now are the logistics. What will that look like, meaning where will those temperature checks take place in the building, and who are the staff members that are going to be responsible for that? So, we will be able to update you specifically on more information related to that item next week. And so then, there's MySchoolRemote, which is 100% online instruction, and it will look different than what our continuous learning looked like during the past spring. And so, at that time, when we first had our disruption to school, we did the best we could in the limited amount of time that we had to get things going. Where we are at now is, we are excited that we, our MySchoolRemote is going to be rigorous and engaging, and it will occur during the full school day. So, there are little differences that I'll describe with MySchoolRemote versus what maybe some folks were accustomed to with our continuous learning back in the spring. But, one of the nice things about MySchoolRemote is that it does allow students to remain enrolled at their current neighborhood or magnet school. And so, although we will have many courses available through MySchoolRemote, including all of the core content classes that our students need to take, and some exploratory, we do need to let our families and students know that all content that is available onsite may not be available through MySchoolRemote. And we'll, we're in the process of making sure that those course offerings are going to be available for our families to view when they enroll in the next coming days, so that they can make an informed decision on MySchoolRemote based upon the courses offered, and what is offered actually onsite at our schools. With MySchoolRemote, there is an option to return to the onsite learning, the face-to-face learning, at semester break. And so, MySchoolRemote for teachers means that our teachers will be following a master schedule. They are going to be teaching courses daily, but, you know, one of the questions that we've received is, well, if I'm a MyRemote teacher, will I have to teach remotely while I also have a classroom of students physically? And the answer is no. However, there is a possibility that a MySchoolRemote teacher could teach first hour remote, have a virtual classroom, and then, another hour throughout the day, based upon what our numbers are looking like, that we need to schedule staff, teaching that same course with a face-to-face onsite. We really don't know what the number of MySchoolRemote staffing is going to be needed until we receive numbers from our student enrollment. So, we'll be working through those logistics, but no, a teacher would not be expected to have a classroom physically, and also try to keep students on our virtual site engaged simultaneously. So, MySchoolRemote will occur during the same school hours as onsite. It also is virtual, face-to-face instruction, daily. And so, there was some flexibility in the spring that we were doing regular check-ins and working with students regularly, but not necessarily daily. With MySchoolRemote, that time is, looks very much like the time that students would be in session during our onsite. Our MySchoolRemote teachers will be using our district curriculum and have some of those same pacing expectations, following our assessment protocols, because it's important that our MySchoolRemote students are being assessed on the same standards and competencies as their peers who are in traditional classrooms. We also know from our feedback that we receive from our families, as well as feedback that we receive from our task force, that we really needed to focus and identify one specific technology platform. Folks said it was confusing, having multiple teachers and getting communication or instruction delivered in multiple ways. And so, because of that, we have selected Microsoft Teams as our technology platform of how our teachers will engage their students through their daily virtual classrooms, as well as a communication tool with families as well. Attendance will be taken, and grades will be assigned. And so, one of the other things that's really important for our teachers to know related to MySchoolRemote is, for auditing purposes, we must maintain daily learning logs with our students. And so, these logs are going to be completed by their students and their families, but our teachers are going to be responsible for verifying that daily, that daily work. And so, one of the other big questions that we have received is, well, how do I find out how to become a MySchoolRemote? Well, one of the things that our teachers will receive later today is an interest survey, and that survey is intended to let us know if you have an interest in teaching more of a MySchoolRemote, or an interest in teaching more of an onsite, or both. And so, you know, that will at least give us a starting point. It's no guarantee that that means that would be the assignment, but it will be an opportunity for us to be able to start with who is interested in teaching MySchoolRemote, so we can make those staffing decisions as we get our enrollment And so then, our students, MySchoolRemote for them. This is ideal for students who want to receive online instruction, but want to remain connected to their neighborhood or their magnet school. Students, again, I'll reiterate, will be attending school during the same school hours every day as their peers who are at our onsite or traditional classrooms. So, we will have, we know most of our elementaries are in session, you know, from 9:00 to around 4:10, and so, that would be the expectation of MySchoolRemote students as well. MySchoolRemote students also receive their devices, and so, they will have those available for them to be able to interact daily with their teacher, as well as completing their assignments. They are, again, expected to maintain that learning log, and we will have a way for them to submit that electronically. And we will have a way for them to submit that electronically. But not only are they expected to submit it, their parent or guardian is expected to sign off on it as well. And again, those are required as part of, we need to have on file for auditing purposes. I've mentioned assignments are going to be given regularly. Attendance is taken daily. And with those assignments and assessment, grades are given, much like if they were attending classes onsite. We know that, you know, we have some, I'm sorry, some students and family members that may be more skilled or may have more experience using some different type of technology devices or maybe Microsoft Teams is going to be brand new. And so we will be providing workshops for our families as well as providing other technical assistance that will help them be successful using their new devices that they're going to be receiving, but also to help them be able to navigate and use the tools within it. So if hearing what you've heard now about My School Remote appears to be something that a family is interested in, we highly encourage, go ahead and go online and complete the enrollment process and let us know. Again, as we can get those enrollment numbers, we'll also be able to help our teachers know what type of staffing placements would be available for them.
Okay, we do have a question on these two models. Mike?
Yes, on this My School Remote, my understanding is, if you'd go to the slide before this one, please.
I always go the wrong way, Mr. Mike.
I know.
Okay.
Okay, it says daily face-to-face, remote direct instruction. That's not what I understood My Remotes, My School Remote was. My understanding of My School Remote, I guess the best story that I can give you is, is we're going, we're face-to-face school. And we're in traditional classrooms with kids coming to school as they normally would. And it's January and we have a snow day. So we could go My School Remote because all the kids would be at home because they couldn't get there. And so it's, My School Remote is separate from onsite. So you couldn't have face-to-face with My School Remote. We would have to be in, in face-to-face phase to use face-to-face.
So if I understand you correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, the face-to-face is sounding that we're going to be physically in the same room together. And so I apologize if that gives that understanding because that's not what I mean there. Face-to-face here is.
Face-to-face on a computer.
Face-to-face, yes.
Okay, because that's.
Not physically.
That's confusing a lot of people. It confused me to death for a long time until I got it explained to me.
Okay.
Because they're, they're two different options that we have because virtual, which you're getting ready to talk about, which is completely different than My School Remote, that's totally virtual and you never go to school. You never, you learn at your own pace. And I'm getting ahead of you and I apologize, but I'm trying to make my point. My School Remote, never do you see a classroom situation. So we could open up in My School Remote and have classroom, regular classrooms where the teachers are teaching to their class like they would traditionally, except they're just a few miles further away than normal. Would that be a correct statement?
That would be correct. So thank you for pointing that out. And we will make sure that further communication that we share relating to My School Remote, we explain differently with that face-to-face because we don't want to give the impression that that means that you are physically in the same room. What that means however, is that I am having a visual, I'm trying not to use face now, interaction. So daily interaction between the teacher or teachers with their classroom of students. And so it allows students who want to still be enrolled at their school to receive all of their instruction online.
Well, my understanding, and make sure that I'm correct, it gives us an opportunity because the reason we're doing all this is because of this virus. And so if we come back and we're in My School Remote and we decide to go at some given date, and I'm not going to give dates because I don't want to get in trouble. Some given date, we go to face-to-face. And all of a sudden, the numbers go the wrong way again and we need to go back to My School Remote. These kids are still being taught by the same teacher, just in a different situ- situation.
Correct. And so that is something with My Remote because they stay, they remain connected with their school and their teachers at that school.
So at, so at any given time, say today, we're, we're face-to-face like we are you and me. And tomorrow, this evening, we find the numbers go up. Tomorrow, we could be in My School Remote and be in, doing this remotely. Would that be a correct statement?
That is correctly, and you are jumping ahead in my presentation.
I'm sorry, I apologize also. I will now shut up and let Cheryl talk for a while.
Well, I just, for our family and teachers, I want to make sure that these two are very clear. So I'm just going to repeat and you tell me if I've understood it correctly.
Okay.
In the onsite, in-person learning, that's school.
That is school.
Kids come back to school and teacher is at school and kids are at school. Now, we are still going to be training those kids that are sitting in, in our school buildings with technology, with a computer. So that if we ever, as Mike said, we get worse and we have to go remote, they will know how to do it. Their teacher will be with them remotely. Their work will be done remotely. They will have the computer. But for the, if a parent chooses this, they will send their student back to school in the fall.
That is correct. If a family chooses onsite, they are physically going back to the school building for their school daily instruction.
Right. And then in My School Remote, just uses an example Buckner, because Buckner is a magnet school. They were selected to go to Buckner as their magnet school, but they don't feel comfortable going back with the onsite. They don't feel comfortable being in the building. So they still will be assigned to Buckner. A Buckner teacher will be their teacher. But they will do all of their work at home, nine to four, just like at school, with a teacher there to work with them. And they'll be able to see the teacher on the computer and the teacher will be able to see them. And they will be able to do the things that they need to do, just like if they were in the classroom, except they're sitting in their home. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So those two options are basically school as we know it, only not exactly. Because one of them is done at school, one of them is done at home. But a teacher is assigned to them. So if at semester, the kids want to go back into the classrooms, if all of their class wants to come back, then that same teacher will be with that same group of kids. Now, that may not happen if one wants to come back and the rest want to stay out. So those are things we'll have to work through.
Yes.
But the bottom line is, we are giving our parents some options with these two choices. And we're also giving ourselves an option because heaven forbid this gets way worse. We can send kids with the computer that they've been trained home on and have all of them do the My School Remote.
That is our goal. That even if students return to the building physically for onsite, that we are starting to teach them how to use their device as part of daily instruction. That we're providing the needed professional development for our teachers to be skilled at delivering daily instruction virtually, using some of our already digital curriculum that we have available. In the event that we have to pivot because of health reasons that our students and staff who were coming to the building physically are prepared to move to a remote form of learning.
And we will be giving our staff some choice as we can on whether they want to be at the building or on a remote, with a remote classroom, correct? That's what the survey's going to be that you're sending out?
The survey will go out today so we can begin to learn who has that interest.
And we're not going to know that until we get our enrollment in because we don't know if we're going to have, you know, half the kids want it or three-fourths of the kids. So we've got to get enrollment in before we start really saying, you can, you teach this, you teach that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Ernestine Kribel?
Well, I think you almost said it. I just want to say it's for the families. The teacher can see the kids at home, whether they're sitting there in front of their computer or not. And the kids can see the teacher on their, on their computer. And the teacher will be able to know whether they're doing their work or not.
That is correct.
And they'll be able to ask the teacher questions. So it's the face is on the computer, the face is not in the room.
Correct. Okay. Mike?
I don't mean to beleaguer this and I, you know, and I apologize. And your, your hard work is appreciated. And I'm just sometimes not the smartest cookie in the bu- bucket here. So what you just told Cheryl was completely different than what you just told me. Because Cheryl asked if somebody, if, say we're My School Remote today and tomorrow we go back to the classroom. And Johnny over here doesn't want to go to school because he's afraid to go to school. He can do My School Remote. So you're going to have a teacher teaching the same class, My School Remote and face-to-face. But that's what was just said.
No.
Because Cheryl just asked, if I don't feel like doing it, I can be on My School Remote and the teacher can still help me, teach me. Because if that child doesn't want to go back to school, they need to go to the, your next step that you're getting ready to talk about and not be in My School Remote. Because at no, no time will, my understanding is, no time will there be virtual and face-to-face teaching in the same classroom. Is that a correct statement?
That is our plan. You know, there are teachers who are innovative and do things that, that.
I think that's where the public is getting confused. Because a lot of the comments that I got was, is, I don't understand the My School Remote. It's virtual school, isn't it? No, it's not virtual school.
No, it's, it's not.
It's an option to, because we can't do the face-to-face teaching that we want to do. It's My School Remote that is completely separates. And again, I'll make the statement, and I don't, I'm not trying to.
No, I, I just want to explain.
I want to make sure that the company, the, everybody's clear. At no time will both things be happening in the same classroom at the same time.
Correct. We are saying that if you were a My School Remote, that teacher, that you would have a virtual classroom. Now, this looks different from the elementary to secondary because at secondary, it is possible that, let's say I'm an English teacher. I could have during my first hour, a My School Remote classroom. I am teaching only students virtually. And so I'm at my laptop, my device, and I am teaching to my classroom who are all at home. I could then perhaps later that day have a class where I'm teaching still my same content, but those students could be physically in a classroom and I am there with them. We just won't know that until we know how many numbers we have and how many students will need to be assigned to My School Remote versus face-to-face. But an elementary teacher would not be expected to have a classroom that he or she is trying to manage in front of them physically and also engage students remotely.
Okay, and that's the part that I can't understand. Why would we have one classroom face-to-face at the same day that we are having one, the rest of the classes remote? Because if we're not, if we're able to do one class face-to-face, why aren't we doing all the classes face-to-face? Well, I understand that, but if, if they don't feel comfortable, then they should be in virtual school.
Well, let me explain virtual school, it's a little different.
Let's go through virtual school and then can we come back and?
We still have a couple more questions.
Okay.
Ben?
Yes, Ben Blankley, District One. I think the confusion here among us board members and some of the public is we have preferred learning model for families, which is, is this first part of your presentation. And that's families get to choose whether they do onsite, My School Remote, or EI Academy. And then separately, we as a Board of Education plus District Admin have, and I've, spoiler alert, I looked ahead. We as a Board of Education and District Admin have the learning model for the district that we get to choose with input from health experts and such. And so if we as an, as an administration team basically say, no in-person, then in-person preferred option is off the table for families. So the only circumstance where the onsite family option is available is if we as a board say, yes, it is okay to have people in the building.
It's safe.
It's safe. So it's, it's two, it's two somewhat, it's two separate sets of, you know, scenarios. One is options for families and the other one is, what do we choose as, as a district? I think, does that help explain it?
This is Mike Rode, District Five. We're going back and forth. I think what you're saying is what I'm saying, but you're saying it a little differently. The, the My School Remote and the face-to-face are two, are two things that are latched together as one by a hitch. So you're, if you do one, you're doing the other. But if you're in virtual school, you're not doing either one of these two. So, but the My School Remote is, we're in pandemic numbers now and people are dying by big numbers all of a sudden and things are terrible. We're on My School Remote, but according to the governor, the day after Labor Day or Memorial Day, whichever it is, things are going to be such a great thing that we can go back to school face-to-face. So these two things are tied together. You can't do one or the other, you have to do them both. Is that a correct statement?
I'm not quite clear when you say do both. Okay, may I take one more attempt at this? You're right, these two are tied together. That is a true statement. Because both of them are teachers teaching the curriculum with the student. One of them is on the computer, the other teacher is teaching them when they're in the classroom. They are not done, think of it as in a classroom, you have two second grade classrooms. One second grade classroom is at the building. The other second grade classroom is at home, but their teacher is teaching them every day. And it is, it is just the matter of location is the difference. The difference is, I'm physically in a building or I'm at my home, but I'm learning the same things. I have a teacher assigned to me that every day I see the same teacher and I'm working with that. In our high schools, the reason it's a little different is because they're assigned hours of classes and they teach, teach their particular curriculum, English 101. It's the same concept in that they may have an English 101 class at school and they may another, the next hour have an English 101 class at remote. So they are hooked together. And where we gain a little bit of, of lift is the whole concept of, if we have to go out remote, we've got kids prepared to do that.
Exactly.
Because right now, our students don't understand all of this and we've got to have training with them, whether it's in-person or if it's on the computer, they're still going to need to get training in how to do this.
That is correct.
So it's really two classrooms done differently, a little differently. But still in the school, still tied with the school, still can come back to the school.
Yes.
I agree with that statement to one point. If Johnny today decides, I don't want to go to school and we're in face-to-face teaching, which is option one onsite, then Johnny is absent from school, just like he would be last year and wouldn't have the opportunity to use the, My School Remote to be in his classroom. Is that correct? Hold on. There's like 27 heads shaking different ways. This is the problem that, that I think our teachers are having, I'm having. Because my understanding is, is My School Remote is for pandemic situations that need to be taken care of, where we can't be face-to-face. It's not safe to be face-to-face. And everybody stays home except the teacher that comes to the classroom and teaches in the classroom. The only people in the school are administrators and teachers. The kids are all at home. When we're non-pandemic and everything is fine and safe and we can go drink beer at the bars again. and we can go drink beer at the bars again.
I'm, I'm almost wondering if-
Because onsite to me, face to face, is the way we used to do it, correct?
Yes. Onsite is traditional.
So what you're saying is, is what I'm getting is, is by watching the head shake back and forth sometimes, is, is you can, you can choose to do both at the same time.
No, no. What we want to be able to do is provide our families an option.
But I don't see, hold on, I don't see it as a choice. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting frustrated. I'm, I don't mean to sound upset. I'm not upset. You, don't get me wrong. I'm just so frustrated because this is, to me, you can't do one without the other. You can't do my school remote and, and not do the face to face or onsite.
Later in the presentation, I'm going to explain something called full remote. And I wonder if that might be along the line of what you're, you're thinking about.
Yes, and, and I was getting ready to go there. I think we're, we're, we're getting, if we can, if, if we can kind of finish the full scope of this, I believe the question will be answered. Because there are two types of, of my school is, is, is of remote. There is a my school remote and then there is a full remote. And I think once we get to that particular portion, you'll see how what happens when we have to go out full versus the split versus the full versus the split. And there are two separate ones. So if you can just give us a minute to get to the full remote, because that's what you're talking about, is what, the questions you're asking, I'm with you. They're in full remote. So if we could get to full remote and that's when if we have to, if everybody needs to go out, we will be in a full remote setting. And she's going to explain that here in just a minute. And then if you don't get that part, keep asking the questions until we get it right.
Okay, well, I'll sit on my hands. You'll ask, answer my question first. I'll be first to-
Okay. We're going to get you-
I said, we're going to get it answered.
Before you leave here, you're going to be like, yeah.
We will get it answered because if you have that question, someone else does out there, so.
Okay, so go ahead and then we'll, we'll ask more questions.
Okay, so I'm going to transition us to Education Imagine Academy, which is our full-time virtual school. Devices also are provided for all of our students who enroll at this school because it is a school by itself. They are the Chargers. So EI Academy is ideal for students who are self-motivated to complete online curriculum at their own pace. And so with EI Academy, it provides more of a flexible school day. I talked about my school remote. Students are in session the same time that our buildings are open and providing instruction onsite. EI Academy, there's that flexibility of what the school day looks like because students are working at their pace and moving through the curriculum as they master that content. In addition to core content courses, there's just a very broad course offerings, including some pretty cool STEM type of courses like coding and cybersecurity and esports. And so although this is self-paced and flexibility in the school, in the school schedule, the students are still expected to be assessed on the same standards as their peers who attend school in our traditional classrooms. Also with EI Academy, one of the differences, I go back to my school remote. Remember I said those teachers are having that daily interaction. My, that's with my school. With EI Academy, we do have qualified educators who are working with, with our EI students, but it's regular check-ins and it's not that daily full day instruction much like what my school looks like. So we have qualified staff who are interacting regularly with our EI students to ensure that our students are being successful academically, but also socially. And so for our students that believe that a flexible, self-paced type of learning environment best meets their learning needs, then this would be more of the appropriate virtual program versus my school remote. We are asking for families to make a one-year commitment if you enroll. However, if students want to return at, to their base school, their neighborhood school, they can request a special transfer at the conclusion of the semester. Or they can wait until the end of the school year and just re-enroll at their base school. If a student comes from a magnet school and enrolls in EI Academy, that magnet placement is not hailed. So if they wanted to go back to a magnet school, they would have to complete a magnet application and go through that lottery process again. And so these are three learning models. We haven't gotten into what a full remote looks like, but this is three learning models that we are saying we want to make available for our students and families to choose from for this academic school year. And so I open it up for questions about these three models or other information that you might need related to that.
Okay, Julie?
Regarding the E, the Education Imagine Academy.
Yes.
I'm, I'm guessing that there are some families that are, that in the past didn't necessarily prefer an online education, but now because the situation is different because of the pandemic, they might be considering this as that, this might be our best choice for education. I have heard though from some folks that they're not being able to find a lot of information provided by the school district about, you know, what's, what, what the program looks like, what the offerings are. Is there, is there any way that we could get, could beef that up a little bit more on the web so that folks would just have a little bit more to see so that they understand what this might involve if this is what their choice is?
We'll have an enrollment.
Come down to the microphone, please.
We actually just finished an enrollment video yesterday and we'll have that updated, I'd say probably by tomorrow.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Two other questions about E-Academy. Assuming that there's going to be more interest in the E-Academy this year than there has been in the past, do, are you going to have the possibility for a lot more spaces? A, a lot more people to be able to enroll in E-Academy if that happens? I mean, I may not, I may not be right, but if there's a lot more interest, are, are we going to have additional spaces so that the folks that are interested are able to be in E-Academy?
We are going to strongly encourage our families to really take a look at my school remote. I understand that you want virtual, which is not the same as a remote setting. And I think that's the confusion. I really do think most parents want a teacher in front of their student every single day, working with their students during the day and keeping them engaged in the activities throughout the day. I know that there are some parents that didn't really understand that until I've had the opportunity to visit with them. And even though they signed up for E-School Academy, now they want to go to my school remote. E-School Academy is really unique because it's really students and families being able to be flexible enough to flex their time because they're still going to be held responsible. But there's not going to be a teacher in front of them all day, every day, like they are in the remote, on my school remote. So what I know is, is that most parents, including myself, because remember I'm a parent too, I'm going to want my child, if I select my school remote, I would rather her have someone sitting in the seats with her, working with her every day, keeping her engaged, because I might not be able to do that as a parent. Because, but the teachers can do better with her than probably I can. And most parents will nod at me and say, yes. So you've got to make that decision as a parent. We are equipped to have a certain amount of students in our E-School Academy. And we are going to be equipped to have a certain amount of, of, of teachers that are going to be able to do my school remote. So I'm not going to say that there's going to be a, a set number because I don't know necessarily what that number is going to be. But I will tell you that I know that there's going to be some shifting going on as we are bringing more clarity to what it is that these two distinct out-of-the-school situations will look like. It's my, my opinion.
Okay, well, so to follow up with that, as a district, if we have additional numbers applying for E-School Remote than we have in the past, are we prepared to be able to accept those applicants in E-School?
We are going to be prepared to accept students in my remote and E-School. I cannot give you a number of how many we are going to be able to accept. It's going to be on the teaching pool that we have. I mean, we can't have 50,000 students in E-School, I mean, my, my, you know, in E-School Academy because then we wouldn't have any other school teaching. So I'm not sure what the number is going to be, but we do have a significant amount of spaces, if that's what you're asking. We'll be able to increase the, the opportunities more than what we have had in the past because before we had a small amount. We'll be able to scale that up pretty good, but we won't be able to scale it up for the entire district to be able to do that model. So we're going to again encourage families to choose my school remote because that keeps them with their teachers in their classrooms and it's easy to move in and out of those settings versus if you are in E, Imagine Academy.
Yeah, if you choose Imagine Academy, that's your school and that's-
That is correct.
For the whole semester.
Because you're just, you, you've totally removed yourself from your school setting if you go to East, East Education. And again, that's an option for some families and they want that. So I'm not discouraging parents, but I am going to tell parents that if you really want to stay and keep that connection with your school, just go on and enroll in your school. And you could pick whether you want to be in the school or at home and you're going to get pretty much the same kind of experiences. They're just, one is on the computer and one is going to be on the site.
Right, and Cheryl corrected me. You're really, if you're enrolling in, in Education Imagine Academy, you're really enrolling for the entire year.
That's what we would want you to do, yes.
Yes, now, at semester, if folks want to change, then they can go through the process. But you're really enrolling for the year.
Because you're, you're in, your remote and your in-school are going to be in sync with one another.
Right.
That's, that's why that, that staying there for the full year is going to be most beneficial because that's a whole different kind of instruction model, different than what you're going to get on this side with onsite or my school remote.
And then my last question about E-School Academy is I know folks have to go on and apply and get accepted, just like you would be doing if you were trying to get into a magnet school this year. So can, can, do we have any idea how long that process takes?
Well, they've been working on that. Mr. Rob, you want to cut back down?
And, and as he's coming, I want to make it clear too, just so this other puts it into perspective. Let's just say, since, since E-School Academy is a school. Each school has capacity. So we wouldn't spend 4,000 kids to East or 4,000 kids to North. We do have an enrollment cap at all of our schools. And sometimes you could take a little bit more, sometimes you could, you know, you have a little bit less. So I kind of want to put that into perspective. Maybe that would help a little bit more to see people see. It is a school. We have capacity, but only a capacity to what is for that particular school. That make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So we've been working through those numbers. I would say probably around, in the interest survey, around 700 right now. We're about halfway through that. So I would say it's, there's been an incredible amount of interest into it. I would say at least through what we've had, it probably would take us about another two weeks because we're contacting families going through all those. So it's, it's a lot different than just accepting based upon the terms. But yeah, I would say just due to the sheer numbers of, of students.
So if a person has their application in right now, today, they can, they should have the expectation that it might be two weeks before they'd get an answer.
It might take, it might take that long just due to the number of folks we're working with, special ed folks and-
Well, I just think it's good for folks to have an expectation so that if they, you know, if they have an expectation that they're going to hear back in a week and they don't hear back, then they might say, well, I'm just going to forget it. They're not going to accept me. But, so they need to have a realistic expectation. And what you're telling me that is two weeks if they're already applied. If they're not in the queue yet, then it could be two weeks from the time they actually make their application.
So keep in mind staffing will come up at a higher level once August 3rd comes back and we'll have more staffing to be able to do that. So we'll be able to increase that capacity.
So it might go a little bit quicker as we go along.
Yep.
Thank you.
And another thing is families are expecting, I think it's important to know what they can expect. When they call you, what they're at, what they're going to be doing is kind of going through kind of a process of explaining a little bit more about what you signed up for. To make sure that you understand, the parent understands, the student, and with the parent, student and the parent and everyone else is going to be doing, then the process begins to be, okay, you fit, we fit, then, then we can move forward. So that's what parents can expect. And that's why it takes a little bit more time because you're really doing some individualization, you know, to make sure that this is going to be the right fit for you.
Very good. Thank you. That's excellent information.
Okay, Ben Blankley?
Ben Blankley, District One. So I did post this on, on social media earlier last week, I believe. But I wanted to let everybody know that I've gone through enrollment for my kiddo. My wife and I had the family chat that we encourage all families to have to determine what model is good for us. And we have chosen to enroll our little guy in my school remote at his magnet elementary. So it, it's going to be, we're basically going to be going through it just like everybody else. And so that's what we determined is best for our family. So I encourage you to go on and enroll. Of course, we're going to mention that again. I, I want to give a shout out to the, the staff members who decided on the mascot for Education Imagine Academy. The Chargers, I think, is, it really touches that nerd core of me. So I really appreciate the shout out to, to, to who did that. I also wanted to reiterate enforcing Microsoft Teams for our technology platform. I know one of the, and you mentioned it, Dr. Irving, but I wanted to reiterate that we, we definitely want to concentrate on one platform. Because I've already seen a few staff members on social media say, oh, I'm not going to do that. Well, please, please focus on Microsoft Teams. Because I, I have, you know, friends of mine that had secondary students in the district and they were having a hop between platforms all throughout, all throughout continuous learning. And, and it was, it was an incredible source of family frustration. So I definitely enforce Microsoft Teams, single platform. I did have an actual question too. Executive Order 20-59 that the governor signed that did not require State Board of Education approval, the one with the temperature checks and the universal masking. The presentation said K-12 students, but we also have in our district three-year-olds and four-year-olds in pre-K. And so I wanted to, to ask, will they also be expected to wear a mask unless they have a specific, like 504 plan that prohibits it?
That is a great question. I'm not going to, we are going to, what we have been discussing is children who are not students and, and are five years or under, children aged two years and under in particular should not wear a face covering because the risk of suffocation. So that is what we as a district will be following as of today.
Okay. So, yeah, so that, yeah, so that does include our three and four-year-olds unless they have, unless they have a, a confirmed reason that they cannot.
We will be following what is in the executive order.
Okay. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Okay. Ron Rosales?
Ron Rosales, Sixth District. On my school remote, they'll have a bell schedule the same as the, the school that they're enrolled in. Is that correct?
They will have a bell schedule the same as the students who are in traditional school.
And then if a student needs help, like, you know, traditional school, some students hang out after class and ask teacher, hey, can I get some more help? In, in my school remote, will they still be able to contact their teacher and get help if they need to? Or is there some other means they can, they can get some help in studies?
Most definitely. And that's why it's important that our my school remote teachers have a schedule just like our onsite teachers because that allows our students and families to know when those staff members are accessible, the best time to be able to contact them. to know when those staff members are accessible, the best time to be able to contact them, contact information, and so all of that will be included.
Okay. And as far as my school remote, may, that's kind of the one I'm looking at, but is there a possibility, and, and I just want to say, I apologize to all the people who sent so many emails, my email crashed, so I didn't get a chance to respond, but I'm hoping that I relay some of their concerns. One of them was about the hybrid, and is there a possibility that any of these could be converted into hybrid, or as time goes on and, and, and things begin to, I guess, soon, you know, when teachers begin to understand how the school's going to operate, both onsite and online? Is there a possibility of that, or is that something that is just not feasible for the school district?
So what we have completed over the past several months is looking at all of the scenarios, looking at logistically what it would take to be able to implement successfully, and we landed on these three specific scenarios, these models, that we believe that our system could successfully provide the supports for our staff, as well as our families and students to be able to implement. And so that's why, at this time, we're only recommending three, three learning models for this upcoming school year, including the onsite, the my school remote, and the Education Imagine Academy.
So when you say the system, you're talking about like from transportation all the way down to?
Transportation, food services, instruction. And so that's why there's an audience of lots of folks from different areas, because we have been literally, and without exaggeration, meeting daily for the past three months, working on plans. And so, and so that's why we have these three, because we feel with confidence that these are the three learning models that we could, as a system, not only implement, but be able to support.
Okay. And then as far as the enrollment numbers, is there a specific date? We're going to get the numbers or that'll be presented to the board, or how's that going to work?
As far as enrollment, we will do, like we usually do with enrollment numbers, we will just, yeah, it's nothing different. The problem now is, is families are kind of sitting back waiting to see what the board is going to vote on as our options for school, so then they can make the decisions about what they need to do. And we are, we're really going to have to have a big push to get our numbers in, because again, we cannot start school if we don't know who's going to be coming to the school district in any of the formats that we've selected, and we can't get, get the schools prepared or staffed. So we're going to be hinged upon whether or not people get on there and enroll.
Okay. So it's kind of like they're waiting on us, and we're waiting on them?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay, all right.
After today, we're going to be able to step together and get enrollment going.
Yeah, yeah, sounds like my family sometimes. All right. And let's see, oh, and then as far as the end of the semester thing, is that being, this is going back to EIA, I think it's EIA, is, they, they can go, they can choose to go back to onsite at the end of the semester?
So with my school remote, because they're already connected to that school, we have elected the end of the semester as a transition point, because again, we're talking about logistically trying to move staff to be able to cover learning model, and if we have students moving in and out, I, I believe if you were to check with any.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why that is that set point.
That's remote learning and EIA?
And what EIA or Education Imagine Academy, why that is different is because, again, Education Imagine is a, a school, and so much like with other schools that we have across the district, if you want to transfer, then you have to go through the special transfer process. And so we are hoping that folks will commit to that full year, but at the end of the semester, if you're wanting to seek a special transfer to return, you can go through that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Ernestine Crable?
I, I want to emphasize that the EIA, Education Imagine Academy, is, is basically just a magnet school. It's a magnet school, just like any of our magnet schools. And that will probably continue whether there's COVID or not, that this is, this is something that is an excellent way for families who choose it. I've taught in that school, in the Wichita District in that school, but I've also taught elsewhere in, and one of the things that parents need to think about when they're choosing this model is that it works successfully for a self-directed student. It works successfully for a student that can do it without having a teacher watch. That means that for elementary kids, that it is more like homeschooling than it is like our other models that we've got here. So as families choose that, they have to know that it's going to take a lot more responsibility on the part of the student or on the part of somebody standing behind with a voice.
And that's exactly why, when Rob was speaking of the process that's been taking place, why it's taking so long, is because even though we have lots of families who have expressed interest, his team are contacting each of those families to ensure that they understand exactly what EI is comprised of, that they recognize it's for that self-directed, that self-motivated student, and I agree with you for that elementary student that is going to be almost like a homeschooling, because they're going to require perhaps a guardian, a family member, someone there to help them, because there is not going to be that daily interaction throughout the entire day, like you will have at your school type of options that we're also providing.
Right. And I think the idea of thinking of it as just a magnet school, just like our other magnet schools, helps to put it entirely outside of our two, two models that really are, are teacher-led instruction in the classroom or through the computer from the classroom, so to speak. And those are, those are unique for the, for the COVID-19 time. The other school, our EI Academy, is a new, or actually, it's just a newly named, because we've always had, had an e-school. But it's a newly named model for a.
For a virtual school.
What am I trying to say? For the magnet, magnet schools, yeah. That, that's all my questions.
Julie Hedrick?
Julie Hedrick, District Two. Okay, to go back to Governor Kelly's Executive Order 2059, as Ben stated earlier, that is the one that wasn't subject to approval by the State Board of Education. So, so we will be following Executive Order Number 2059, and that's the one that includes the statements about the masks and the statements about taking temperatures every day when folks enter the building. Last week, when we were talking, we had a little bit of confusion on the mask thing, and you said to me, well, as things unfold, it'll get clearer. You were exactly right, because things have unfolded now.
And, and there's still some unfolding, to be honest, because we now have the county, and I'm going to probably need to have, I know that there was a meeting earlier today, and so I'm going to ask, before I even open my mouth to confuse anyone, I'm going to ask our attorney to please come and support us as it relates to the executive orders, the county orders, and in our instance, we even have a city order. So I think we need to have the legal expert, the one and only, as he's coming slowly down those stairs, Mr. Tom Powell will help us to dissect this.
President, board members, I'm confused, too. Right now, today, I, I do know, because I had a conversation with the county councillor this morning, that the order that you've mentioned, the 2059, that is in effect today. And that's, that's the face mask orders and rules that we have to follow today. What Mr. Papoun told me was that he believed that the county commissioner would be considering whether to put in place less restrictive requirements than are required in that order. I believe that they're meeting next Wednesday. So until next Wednesday, that's what will be in effect, and it still, still may be in effect after next Wednesday. We'll have to wait and see what the county decides to do.
But if the county doesn't require it, that's, we as a school district may or may not necessarily require it.
That is correct. And so that's why it's hard to tell what we're going to do with the masks.
And to make it more complicated and cause your mind to go in circles, we still have a city ordinance that applies everywhere but Bel Air and Park City. So we have to follow the, you know, the county may make it less restrictive in the city ordinance, but we're going to have to comply with the city ordinance regardless.
And currently, there's a city ordinance about no more than 15 in a gathering, correct? Isn't that one that Dr. Menz gave? Isn't that a city, or is that a county?
That, that's county.
That's county. But that's currently in, in force also, in addition to the executive order currently being enforced.
Right, but it does not apply to school districts.
That does not apply to school districts. Okay.
Now you see why we can't sleep, because we have to keep up with what everything is going, and that's why sometimes it gets confusing, and that's why sometimes we don't say a lot, because we don't want to say and then re-say and re-say. That's what confuses people. So you just don't say it at all, so that you don't get people confused.
But I was, I was relying on the fact that this executive order was in place. I was, I was functioning in my mind that this was going to be happening in our school district. So it's good for it to be clarified that that is not necessarily true.
Well, it's true today.
We're not in school today, though.
Now, now I've confused myself, so.
Well, and, and the order says, you know, that it's in, in effect until it's rescinded. So if we could be confident that we were following this, we could be fairly confident that we were going to be following it for quite a while. But now we have learned that maybe not after next week will.
Well, we can still, as you said, we can still follow her order if we choose to. That will be up to us, because we can be more restrictive than whatever the county tells us.
Yes, yes, but that would have to be a vote, a, a, not a unanimous, but a majority vote by this board.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so my last question is still a valid question. When we come down to the point that we all, that we're going back to school and onsite, we've got folks onsite going to school, and we know at that point in time, everyone's clear of what the rules are, whether we're wearing masks, whether we're not wearing masks, whether we're taking temperatures, whether we're not taking temperatures, all of that, everybody's clear about the rules are, we're actually there on site. What happens in the event of someone, teacher and/or student, being non-compliant? What is the process for that going to be? Is it a special process? Are we going to have like a special omnibus bird, bombs bird person? I mean, is there, or is it just going to be kind of the typical standard process?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna attempt to talk about the employees, and then I'm going to have my colleague come join me, so that I make sure, and he can interrupt as I begin to talk, okay? So we have meetings every five minutes, I can't be on all of them, but the last meeting I was in, I understood when I left what was going to happen. But again, that's why I need my colleagues with me. Okay? So I am going to attempt this question. If we have, if the order is for us, and we already know that we're going to have staff, and I'm speaking of staff, staff are going to be required to wear the face mask or face covering. If they're in their classroom, and there's no one in there, and they need to take it off to get a break, a breather, take it off. But if you're interacting in the hallways, in the teachers' lounges, in all of those places, we need you to have a mask on or covering on in those spaces. There is not an option.
Correct.
We will be wearing face masks. Is there anything further you want to know about that?
Well, I guess, again.
I mean, I'm not trying to be flippant, I just want to make sure I answered your question, or are you asking me what happens when they don't wear the masks?
Yeah, I mean, what if, what if somebody, what if somebody finds out that some teacher isn't wearing their mask?
And gets sent to the principal's office.
We, we, we will, we will have, we will be speaking with those individual teachers and saying that in this environment, to be able to work in it, this is what has to, has to happen. You have to have your masks on.
And that process should, those, we should report it to the building principal? That's what I mean by process.
We're not going to be doing the tattletale syndrome thing, we're not going to do that. But if there are people who are not wearing masks, and we are made aware of it, we're not going to encourage people to tell on each other, I don't think that's cool. But I do think that if we see that there are cop, first of all, you can ask your colleague to please, don't forget to put your mask on.
Sure.
My colleagues do me like that, you know, sometimes, because we all got to get used to doing it. Now, I don't have anybody reminding, because I know I can keep doing it. But when we first get in, onboard of this, you got to get people to help each other. We're, we're in this together, not to tell, but we're in this together, so we just remind each other. But if there becomes a situation where someone refuses or do not want to wear a mask, that's not acceptable, because we have to be able to follow the rules that are put in place in our workspace, okay? So what we will do is there would be a, we will visit with the person, just like we would do with anything else, if someone did something that was in the rules that they're not supposed to. And there is a progressive model that we would use as, to be able to ensure, we would talk to them, we wouldn't just immediately start disciplining people, we'll talk to them the importance of why they need to wear the mask, if they have trouble with the mask, maybe they need a different type of mask, face covering. I mean, we're going to do something to help people first, but if we, if that's not the case, we have to make sure that we're wearing the masks. So we'll do what we need to do in a progressive manner to ensure that our staffs are wearing their masks. And I hope that answers your question.
It does, it does. And I, and, yeah, that's good enough. We'll just stick with that. We won't talk about, about students at this point in time, because we're not even, we haven't even established a clear, clear rule yet.
That's right.
So, so, yes, thank you.
Okay. I, I seem to be the last one on the, the questions right now, and we are being asked to give you direction today. So I am going to ask for a motion for us to vote on the three examples that you've given us, the onsite in-person, the my school remote, the online learning, and the Education Imagine Academy virtual program, so that we can then get this information out to our principals and our teachers, and they can begin to think about what I would like to do or not do with this.
That is correct.
So is there a motion?
Ben Blankley, District One, I move that onsite, my school remote, and Education Imagine Academy be approved as 2020 to 2021 learning models.
Ron Rosales, District Six, I second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Ben Blankley and seconded by Ron Rosales. Mike has a question before we vote?
Well, I still don't have my answers.
Okay.
And I can't vote on this until I'm clear, because I'm getting interesting emails on my phone as I'm sitting here, and I'm not going to put up with that from the public. If you want to threaten me, threaten me. This is, this is incorrect, what, what this guy did, dude. So you know who you are. But, you know, I'm just trying to find out what's right, what's wrong. I want the best for our kids, so that they're safe, when we put them in school, I don't have to worry about these 50,000 kids going to school. I'm not ready to vote. I don't think any of us are ready to vote, because we haven't heard the whole presentation, and we need to make sure that we're voting on the right thing, because as you heard yesterday, we have control. We are the ones. It came from the governor that we have full autonomy to do what we want to do. It came from the state board, with the exception of two state board members, that said we are in full control. So until I get answers, we can't be doing this. I mean, you can go ahead and do it, and I can vote no.
Well, ask your questions, Mike.
Well, let me finish. I'm a little bit irritated, because I, I got, just like you guys, got the 400 emails, and I'm, understand, I, I appreciate it, 100%. I appreciate the emails. Send me some more. But the fact is, you know, we're, we have to make these decisions, and we didn't know this until yesterday, that we were in full control, that the state board. this until yesterday that we were in full control, that the state board doesn't tell us what to do anymore, except that they take our accreditation if we don't do what they want us to do. And the legislature who can, who said we can do what we want to do and we have full control, they can take our funding. So, you know, we're looking down the barrel of something that if we don't do it right, you know, and the public doesn't understand it, if I don't understand it, and I've been sitting through the workshops, you know, at this point in time, it's time to, as I said yesterday, put on our big boy pants and, and get down to, and dirty and do this. This isn't simple. This isn't one of our normal board meetings and I didn't come here to, to lecture and I didn't come here to do anything, but, you know, by golly, it's time that we do what's right and we take the time. If that takes all day, it takes all day. And I think we're wrong in jumping to conclusions and saying, because I've got three different considerations on My School Remote from three different people. So if I don't understand it, the media sure in the hell doesn't understand it. They, they think it's virtual school, all of it, and it's not. So we need to make sure that before we make this vote and approve what we're doing, we better know what we're approving because if we approve the wrong thing, I'm sure that the district is bringing to us the finest programs that they can bring us. I have not a doubt in my mind, but I have to make sure I understand it completely or I can't vote for this.
Okay, what, what other questions, additional questions do you have? And we will, we will proceed.
Okay, and I, again, I'm, it's not the people in this room that I'm upset with.
We understand that.
I'm upset with the people in Topeka. You know, it's, it's crap. My questions are, again, onsite and My School Remote are two things that are the same but different. In other words, you have to have both of them to do one of them. Is that correct?
You have to have, they, they are kind of in sync with each other. You're right. Onsite and My School Remote is done with the staff at one site. Let's just always use Hyde. So Hyde Elementary has a group of students. They probably have maybe 300 students. Some of the students at Hyde, and then you have a set of teachers at Hyde, okay? Those teachers and those students are going to start building what it's going to look like at Hyde, okay? So there will be some parents and families that will choose to take their students and say, you know, I'm not really comfortable with them going onsite, but I want them to stay enrolled at Hyde. Then you're going to have a set of parents who will say, you know what, I feel comfortable with all the things that they're going to do with the site and I want my kids to be onsite, okay? So now we have two sets of students that all are enrolled at Hyde, at Hyde, okay? So now the next step for our building to do would be to take the teachers and say, okay, and as you heard them say, they're going to do a survey, okay? So we'll have all of the survey information for all of the teachers and the staff at Hyde. Some teachers will say, I want to teach remote. Some teachers will say, you know, I'd rather just go onsite and teach onsite, okay? So you'll have that division as well. So then as a building principal and as a building staff, we will begin to take the students and the staff and begin to place them. So the teachers who want to teach remote will be assigned to the students that want to teach, to, to accept their instruction remotely. The teachers that are in the building, they will then take their students and they will assign their students to the teachers that are going to be teaching in the inside. The beauty of this particular piece is because when you have those people now all separated, school can begin at Hyde because everybody's assigned, okay? So let's just now, I understand what you're saying now. Now the confusion begins to happen when you say what happened. So for the first nine weeks.
Semester.
Semester, thank you Tiffany. The first semester, all of the people will stay in that teaching model, every last one of them. So everybody that signed up to do remote will stay in the remote category and the teachers and all of the students who signed up to be, go ahead.
Okay, you're saying remote, is that Education Imagine Academy or is that My School Remote?
That's My School Remote.
So if you, I'm not going to get this and I hope that everybody else is getting it and I'm tired of wasting people's time. It's time to move on. I'm going to vote no because I don't understand it and I don't feel good about it, but I understand that if the rest of you vote yes, I don't have a problem with that. But I can't see where we have one, My School Remote, which is online learning and onsite in-person training based on this piece of paper right here. I can't understand that we could have at one time, say today, 200 kids in a school being taught online and 200 kids being taught face to face. I can't see that. I can't see that. I don't believe in that. We're either online or we're virtual and that's why we have the EI Academy. That's why I thought we set up the EI Academy. My School Remote was set up to be virtual learning during times that was unsafe to have children in schools. And if that's not the case, then too bad for me and I'll move on. And again, I won't, my feelings won't be hurt, but I, I can't, I think we're either in school or we're on remote or we're virtual. Those three things are three things that are completely different to me. And, and EIM Academy, again, you have to sign up for one year to, to be in it. You can't go in and out, you can't come back to school, you can't decide to go back virtual. The decision's been made. And I believe that's what we're trying to say because it says 100% online instruction. Learning is connected to the base school. Technology is provided, engaging virtual daily interactions, regular, full regular school day of instruction, learning logged regularly submitted by parents and students, and the option to return, return to onsite learning may be selected at semester break. And that's the point that I don't understand because why would we say semester break? What if tomorrow, we can put all our kids back, all our 50,000 kids back in the school, why can't they be there? And that's why that would be onsite. So that's my dilemma. If, if I'm wrong, just nod your head yes, you're wrong and, and I'll be happy and let's get the vote over with.
Julie, Julie Hedrick?
I'm going to go back to your Hyde illustration because I think it might clear, maybe help your discussion for families if there's anyone else that's still confused. So I'm thinking at Hyde then, and we don't know how the numbers will be, but let's say we've always at Hyde had two first grade classrooms. Well, this year at Hyde, it ends up that one of those first grade classrooms is going to be an onsite classroom and one of them is going to be a My School Remote classroom. Let's say at third grade, we had three, third grade classrooms before. So now this year, the way the numbers are going to work out is we're going to have two of our classrooms be onsite and one of the classrooms be on school remote. So that if you sign up for on school remote, you are assigned to a teacher, there's a group of kids in your classroom, you're assigned to that teacher in your classroom for the entire semester as you would have been previously. It's just that now you're doing that classroom at home on a computer as opposed to doing that classroom at Hyde Elementary on Oliver Street.
Correct.
And I think, and I think.
Take no more stab at this because what you're telling me is if we decide to come back according to the governor's mandate of right after Memorial Day, that, or Labor Day, whatever it is, that we will be in class that day.
If you have signed up for onsite learning.
No. What if there's a spike in the pandemic and it's, it's a terrible place to be? I mean, see, that's.
Then, then we will be in full remote.
Full My School Remote?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Well, see, that's why we can't vote on it because we haven't gotten there yet, in my mind.
Mike, they're just asking to accept the models, the choices that the students have.
Yeah, and we do have a motion on the floor made by Ben Blankley and seconded by Ron Rosales. And I think we do need to call the question on this and, and take a vote. Whoops, I got some people popped up again. Julie?
I, I just want to make one other simple comment that, that might help is, in my mind, the reason that the three models are important is, is that even if all of the safety people would say it's okay to go back to school, even if the governor would lift her emergency order and say, it's reversed, everything's great, everybody can go back to school, even if Dr. Fauci got on and said, hey, things are looking good in the United States of America, I think it's possible that there are still some families out there that in their family, because they have a medical person in their family or because they are taking care of fragile parents in their family, I think even if all of that was said, that there would be, there could potentially be some families that still would be uncomfortable with sending their kids to the school site. So I think it's good for us to have the options so that though, we're doing everything we can to make that, the, the sites safe places. We're doing everything we can. We're also as a board going to have to make a decision about whether at some points, we're going to all have to keep everybody at home because it's not safe for anybody to be there. So there's also that. But I think there's the potential that there are some families that are going to be uncomfortable going back to a physical environment and we are trying to provide those family with, families with a quality education, which is why we're providing the several models.
Right. Thank you. Ernestine Crable?
Ernestine Crable from District Three. I think that Julie has said it very well. I think the issue is we've added another choice to families in the, in the 259 district. We've added another choice. This choice has been forced upon us because of the COVID, but it doesn't mean that the choice wouldn't perhaps continue for the future. We'll see if it's needed and wanted. I have had a number of parents that have contacted me of saying, please don't make my child go back to the classroom. My child has thus and such a kind of a medical condition. I've had others that say, how can I be sure that the onsite teacher is going to know how to handle my child's blah, blah, blah? So that's why that I think that the idea that this is a choice, that the Wichita district allows parents who right now are not ready to send their kids back to school. But on the other hand, we have the on-campus site, the on-campus in the classroom with Mrs. Jones, that the kids who need to go back to school, who want to go back to school, there are thousands of our parents that have to have a child in school in order for them to go back to work and they are desperate to get their children into a safe school. And the thing about this is that by doing it this way, we can have our in, on-campus ones spread out. We can have them with their masks. We can have them in, where there's a nurse and those parents can go ahead and they can work as the grocery clerk or they can work as the delivery person or they can work as the medical person, the children of doctors that don't have any babysitter that could take care of them. This to me allows for the parent who has the option to be home with their child to be able to, to, at least for right now, until they're, they might want to wait for two years before they feel safe that COVID is gone. But they might just choose next semester to say, okay, it's safe enough now. That's my belief that I'm glad that we came around to choosing a choice, to allowing the parents to have a choice. If they are nervous about their child being with other children right now, they don't have to give up education.
Okay, thank you. I see no more speakers and I am going to call for the question. We do have our voting machines back. Since all seven of us are here and no one is remote today, we can vote electronically. We won't be able to do that if we have someone join us electronically in the future. So the motion was made by Ben and seconded by Ron. Please cast your vote. Motion passes six, one. Thank you very much. Let's go on with the next section because we still have more information that we need to receive this afternoon. Our learning decision-making guide. Thank you. Dr. Thompson?
And so you do have. You going to go with this one?
Oh, go ahead.
Are you going to?
I was going to.
Okay, that's great, all right. Go ahead, Dr. Irving, go right ahead. Thank you.
Feel free to chime in in case I miss anything out because what you have in front of you as well as the draft version of it there on the screen is what we are titling the Learning Model Decision Making Guide. I started off this presentation saying, I'm sure we will find a shorter way of referencing this particular document. But this document came about, much like the learning models came about, that you just approved. It's taken us several months of gathering feedback from our task force members, data we've collected from our surveys that have been administered to our families and our, our staff. Many of us have had regular ongoing meetings consulting with peers from across the nation and we have very regular communication and collaboration with local health professionals. And so what we've learned is we need to have a process in place that we can share with you on how we are looking at what those health professionals, our regular communication we have with Setwood County Health Department, how we are using that information and can share that with you and go through a process that will help us make recommendations today, tomorrow, and anytime throughout this school year on what is the most appropriate learning model at that time. So yes, we have now received your approval that we have these options to provide to our families this fall, but we also know we have this tool now that indicates that we will collaborate with Setwood County Health Department to identify what is the level of community restrictions and be able to use that information to go through this protocol and say, at this moment in time, these three scenarios or three learning models that you just approved, we are in this area and so these models are appropriate for this, at this moment in time. But at the same time, if we, through our collaboration with Setwood County Health Department, have identified that our community is at a level of high risk, then we should be looking at, do we need to look at something like a full remote model at that time? So one of the things that we know is that we must be agile and prepared to move from an onsite model to a more virtual model or online model. And so this protocol or tool will allow us to go through a process and be able to make informed recommendations to you moving forward. And so I spoke of full remote because that is a possibility that we may have to be prepared to pivot to a full remote at any time during this school year. It could be the start of the year or we could, going through this decision-making guide, determine at any time through this school year that that is a, a need. So I want. So I want to give you a little information about what is full-remote because we've been talking about all of these other online learning models. So full-remote is a model that we could shift to according to our decision-making guide if we are at a high level of community restrictions as defined by the collaboration between the school district and Settler County Health Department. During full-remote distance, or sometimes folks refer to as online learning, and we've heard those terms interchangeably used this afternoon, would occur for all students. It would operate the same as our MySchoolRemote. The main difference between MySchoolRemote and Full-Remote is MySchoolRemote is a learning model where families choose to enroll. Full-Remote is a learning model that you, as our Board of Education leaders, would decide to implement because we've determined that through our collaboration with Settler County Health Department and following the process and our decision-making guide, that it is the best health and safety interest for our stakeholders, for our students and staff, to pivot to that full-remote learning. We would, if needed, to move to a full-remote. We would provide workshops and technical support for our students and our families to implement so that they could be successful during full-remote. Now, when we speak of full-remote, it can look different in a couple of different ways. One, full-remote can occur in different learning durations. It could be targeted type of full-remote. That, an example of that could be that as a board, we, you make a decision that you would like remote, full-remote to occur during a time that some identify as a high flu season time, peak season time, and we don't want staff and students in buildings. That would be a targeted full-remote where we would say, "During this period of time, all students and staff will work remotely, much like how our MySchool, but no one would actually be in our buildings." Short-term full-remote could also be implemented. So if we needed to close buildings or area of buildings for, you know, two days or a couple of weeks, and we could identify specifically that during this period of time, we know that we're going to need to shift to a full-remote for this short term. Extended closure is another time where full-remote learning could occur. Think of that much like when schools, our school buildings were closed this past spring. We didn't have staff and students in, and we, that was for a longer duration of time. And so that is considered an extended closure. We would have all of our students and staff working remotely from home. That's why it's so important, I started off earlier this afternoon, speaking about making sure that even if we have students who are in our buildings physically with onsite, that we're starting to teach with those digital tools, that we're starting to use that curriculum that can be accessed online and providing professional development for our teachers around remote teaching because we want to be flexible and prepared in the event at any time that we need to shift to a full-remote. There's also full-remote according to location. We heard last week from Luke as he spoke about if we had an affected area, that we would close down that area for the cleaning and following all of the protocol that he and his team have identified. So we would not want those students to go home for that duration of time and not be engaged in learning so we could have them in a, students from a particular classroom or a couple of classrooms from a building who could actually work remote, full-remote during that time that that affected space was being taken care of. We could also have full-remote occur at a specific school. Maybe there are some concerns that need to be addressed to ensure that a school is at the standard of safety and meet our health standards. And so we wouldn't close down the entire district, but we may have a school that might need to go full-remote. And then, of course, if we have, much like we had in the spring where there has been this decision that has been made either by you as Board of Education members or from the state level that our schools are closing, then we would be prepared to go as a district as full-remote learning, that extended learning. And so I know there's been discussion from the table about whether we would require staff and students to be onsite if there were concerns related to safety and health. And so just want to reiterate that with our decision, Learning Model Decision-Making Guide and that collaboration that would occur with our Settler County Health Department and medical leaders that we have been working with, that we would go through that protocol and be prepared to be able to share with you those recommendations regarding shifting to a full-remote learning. And so with that, another recommendation that we have for you this afternoon is that you approve this model that, of this tool that would allow us to be able to go through a process and be able to present to you what we have learned going through that process, using that tool as a protocol to determine the most appropriate learning model at that time. And that could come from you asking us to go through that or us just from our collaboration with the Health Department wanting to bring that to you and provide you updates at any given time throughout this year. And so I open it up for questions and discussion, and you're recommended approval.
Julie Hedrick?
Yeah, based on the discussion that we had earlier, my assumption or supposition, based on the low-restriction model, we don't have the box there in green, but that, that, if we added a box, it might say that there is a COVID-19 vaccine available. That might be a time when we would go back to a low-restriction. With the current environment, I don't think low, a low-restriction model is very likely. But I do think if like in, you know, I'm being very, very optimistic, but let's say, let's say there's a vaccine available by February or March, and our students are getting, getting vaccinated, then we may at that time, as a board, say, "Okay, yeah, we, we are back to a low-restriction possibility because now there's a vaccine available and all of our kids are being vaccinated, all of our staff are being vaccinated. The, the COVID-19 pandemic has, we, as a nation, we've kind of made it through that now. That might potentially be a time whenever we'd say, "We're back at low restrictions so schools can really kind of go back to normal." That could be, yes. Otherwise, probably we're in the moderate restriction area or in the high restriction.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Ben Blankley?
Ben Blankley, District One. I wanted to ask for clarifications that when slash if we approve this Learning Model Decision-Making Guide, the, the learning model that we would pick as a district would be a Board of Education decision made either before the fall semester begins or during the fall or spring semesters. It would just be a continual kind of looking at and collaboration that we, as a, as an elected body, would, would choose.
That would be correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Cheryl Logan at large. I, I like the, this idea that we can pivot based on where we are because a month ago, we weren't anywhere close to where we are today. And a month from now, we may be at a whole lower level or a bigger level. We don't know. So my, my question, I have a couple of questions. One is under high restrictions, you talk about MySchoolRemote, which if a parent chose in-school or MySchoolRemote, they would stay in that. But it's also, and should we not include, or the EI Academy? Because if a parent chooses the EI Academy, they're already in remote, and they're going to stay there. The, the, and so it's just, it's giving our parents, we're letting them know that we're moving all of our kids that were sitting in chairs in, in our classrooms into a remote setting, and we, they would be trained, their teacher would follow them, just exactly like the remote teachers do. It would be a teacher in a classroom. They would just pivot to working in their homes because of the condition of the COVID virus at that moment in time.
That is correct.
And if we had, and you said this, but I just want to make sure it's clear. If we had the second-grade classrooms that we've been using as an example, they came down with COVID. They've been restricted to their own area. They haven't been out with the third graders or the fifth graders. And we would maybe go remote with that group while we're sanitizing the room, doing the checking, doing the, all the things that the Health Department requires us to do, but not necessarily send out everybody in the whole school.
That is correct.
Okay, so this gives us options based on what's happening at a, at a moment in time or, or a period of time.
Exactly.
And we are saying that with our moderate restrictions, we again have the two sites that are tied together, the onsite and the MySchoolRemote. We have the separate one of the Education Academy. And here are the things that, that would happen in that. So this is kind of our guide of whether we're, open up the schools like normal, keep going, kind of have the two, the three different models, but two of them linked together at the school level. And then the, heaven forbid, but we have to send everybody home like we did in the spring.
Yes.
And this gives us an option of looking at this chart and saying, "Here's what we do and why we doing it."
Exactly.
Okay. That's clear to me. I understand that. Are you, Ben?
Yes, Ben Blankley, District One. I came up with another couple of questions. Do we know how count day would change? Typically, you know, count day is in the fall, and that's when we get our, our numbers and our, you know, groups and everything. Do we have an idea yet from the department, KSTE, how that's going to change?
We have not received any guidance. So when you have no guidance, you go on what we've done in the past. And our count day is September the 20th. And I'm looking at my financial guru up there, and she's nodding, so I am in good company with that answer.
And I'll just put a plug in. That's why it's also very critical that those MySchoolRemote students are completing their logs because that is part of our verification that those students were enrolled and actively engaged in instruction on that day.
Okay, then that's, thank you. My other question is, so this, this last spring, the, the State Board approved a waiver on the contact days and instructional hours. And per like Kansas statute, it, it says we must meet this particular contact, this number of contact days, these number of contact hours. So far, to my understanding, we have not received a waiver for the coming year. Do we anticipate that we will apply for slash receive a waiver on those contact days or hours?
We, we would love to have that option. As of today, the answer is no. We are 1,116 hours that we have to have of seat time. So that has not changed, and it only changes through the legislation, not the Kansas State Board of Education. They do not have the authority to change the contact hours.
Okay, thank you.
And if they offer it, we will apply.
Okay. Mike?
I am so sorry, but I don't understand. And it's not you, it's me. And I, again, I appreciate what you're doing, I really do. I love you to death. This chart that I have in front of me. Tell me it's the right one. Okay. Under low restrictions, we're onsite learning only. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Moderate restrictions, which we haven't defined a moderate restriction, which I understand we don't want to, we could still be onsite. Why would we have that option if we're concerned that the health of our children are at risk?
Because although our buildings are open, we are saying we have a list of health and safety guidelines, protocols, procedures that we have put in place during these moderate restriction, restricted times, that even though our buildings are open, our buildings aren't going to look how they look when we are low, low. You know, low restriction, I would consider what school looked like in the fall of last year. Moderate right now, we're saying everyone must wear masks is one of the things that we talked about earlier. We've talked about social distancing. So even though the buildings are open, the buildings won't look the same as they would if we were at a lower restricted level.
Well, it says here, so let's go to the masks. That's a good example. So if we're at a low restriction, we get to take the masks off.
That would be if we have vaccination.
Yes, so, so it goes back to what Ms. Hedrick stated earlier. So there are things still with, with a low restriction that might need to be in place. But I guess the point, maybe the mask wasn't a very good example, but my point was that even though moderate restriction, we're saying that onsite learning is available and we, what we want to be able to provide to our students and community, we're saying that there's, it requires enhanced implementation of health and safety guidelines that we might not have had in place before. And so the many things that our team presented last week related to custodial protocols and ventilation, all of those things are being put in place, not because we're at a low restricted level, but because our level is moderate and for preparation if it was high.
Okay. And it says down here below that the parent will have a choice of three learning modules, models. And I just heard us say that the Board will decide if we're moving from low restrictions to moderate restrictions and that we can't go in and out of EI Academy. That, I mean, this, do you, I mean, I'm a simple guy.
Okay, so, and so let's see if we can try to, to explain that. Parents are going to have a choice regardless of what, where we are. Well, except for if we're in high restriction, they won't have a choice. We will, that will be the area where families won't have a choice, is full-remote. So if, if the pandemic is high, if, if, if everything is not going in the right directions, as a board, you can make the decision to say, "District, we are now in high restriction." So it doesn't matter whether or not you're in MySchoolRemote. It doesn't matter whether you're on the eyes, onsite. You're going to all go into high restriction. Everybody. Everybody's going to be at home. Everybody's going to be working. This school's never going to, we're going to keep working. But if you're in the moderate restriction, let's don't even talk about EI Academy because EI Academy is kind of unique because that's its own school. It is out all the time. So let's just talk about onsite and MySchoolRemote. If you go into the moderate and the Board members look at all the numbers, we look at everything, and we say, "Okay, we feel comfortable enough with where we are as a community that we are ready to open up the campuses." Then as a parent, you can have that choice of saying, "I'm going to go onsite with all of those restrictions that we have, or I want to do MySchoolRemote and stay out during the moderate restriction time when we feel that it is safe for everybody to make that choice." Okay? When you go to the low restrictions, and maybe that's what's confusing, is the low restrictions because a low restriction really is not even relevant to us right now because there's no vaccination. Because there's no vaccination, there's really not, I mean, you know, we really are not just there. We're just not there yet. Okay? And I don't know if we're even going to be there within the 2000, the next, the school term that we're getting ready to start. I'm not sure whether we'll get there. But if we get there, then the board can vote and make a decision and say, you know what, we are there. Finally, our country is where we want it to be. We, during that school year, still have another option to get, go out. I mean, you know, use that particular model. So this is just a guide to help us to see and understand how we move in and out of the restrictive areas, depending upon where we are in our community with the virus. So you guys are going to make those decisions about those three restriction areas. And as you make those decisions, we will be moving in and out of those areas.
Okay.
Julie Hedrick?
Okay, I'm going to go back to Hyde School again. And we're at Hyde School. And we've got a building principal there that has typically so many kids in her, in her school. And typically so many teachers in her school. We want to get folks enrolling so that we can see whether those kid numbers are still going to remain somewhat typical. So that we can know whether those teacher numbers are going to still remain somewhat typical. We now, now we've confirmed that. We have a bunch of folks that have enrolled. We've kind of confirmed where we think we're going to be. So we have three third grade teachers. One of them now, through the survey and the discussion with the principal, we've determined one of them is going to be the My School Remote teacher. And then the other two, we've got enough kids that are going to come to onsite learning that the other two third grade teachers are going to have onsite classes. So we're moving along happily in the school year in that regard. But then something happens in the nation, in the city, with our health officials, et cetera. Something happens. We determine that we're now in high restriction. So now we have all three of those third grade teachers now functioning remotely. We still have the one on-school-remote classroom. They're pretty much, they were already doing it. So they're pretty much continuing on the way they were. But the two onsite classes, the teachers with their students, those two onsite classes now, they're also going to be functioning remotely. So is that, I mean, that's just one scenario. There's many, 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 many other possible scenarios. But that's just kind of one scenario to kind of explain how this works at the elementary school level with our guide and with our three approved models of learning.
That is correct. And so one of the things that we want to be able to come from this is to show that we are prepared and recognize the need to be flexible and agile. Because we have three learning models right now that have been approved for our families to choose to enroll in. But if there is a health emergency or crisis that we are prepared and flexible and know that there will be a need, if that's the case, to move to a full remote for the safety interest of our students and our staff.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. Cheryl Logan at large. I just want you to speak again to the technology so that our parents understand what kind of technology as we have to, if we have to move from one to the other, will their students have that? Along with training for the student, the parent, and the staff.
Well, thanks to your June approval of purchasing of devices, every Wichita Public School student will receive a device this fall. That includes pre-K through 12. And so we are prepared to get those devices in the hands of students this fall. The team is working on that deployment schedule. But we know we can't just give folks devices without preparing them and showing them how to use them. Not only how to use the device, but our technology platform, which is Microsoft Teams. And then depending on grade level and content, we have digital curriculum that's available for our students. So we will be providing family workshops in addition to what our students are going to be doing with their teachers, because they'll be learning hands-on with their teachers as well. But we will be providing family workshops, because we want our families to be able to support their kiddos at home with their devices. We'll be providing a technical support line to help folks as, I mean, some folks are really savvy with problem solving with technology. I'm not one of those folks. And so I would need a number or to know how could I call or get help to troubleshoot some issues. And so we'll be providing that type of support as well. What we want is for our students to be successful with their devices. And so we will prepare to provide those supports in order to be able to do that.
Thank you. Mike Grody?
Okay. I, looking at this chart after Dr. Thompson explained everything to me, I appreciate that. I can get behind this and I can make a motion if you'd like me to, if we remove the one or between My School Remote and EI Academy. Because, right here.
Show me what?
Right here.
Okay.
Because EI Academy should be a standalone. And that means we're telling parents that they can move their kids into EI halfway through the year because of moderate restrictions. And it should be a standalone system.
Perfect.
That's, I understand the rest of it.
Perfect. We'll make that adjustment.
I mean, if that's, if everybody.
I didn't have a pen, so I was asking someone.
I checked it for you, Dr. Irving.
If that's, everybody on your side agrees. I mean, I don't want to change something if it's the wrong thing to do.
I'm looking and I'm seeing head nodding, yes, so.
Okay, and are you making a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the Learning Model Decision Making Guide as presented with the one exception of taking the or out of between My School Remote and Education Imagine Academy on the chart.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second and then I'll get to you?
Ben Blankley, District 1. I second the motion.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. And Julie has a question?
There's already been a motion made, so I'm not sure how this works as far as protocol. But I'm going to make my comment and then you can tell me if I can't say it. If we're making recommendations to the chart, I'd like to make a recommendation that we have a green box that says COVID-19 vaccine available.
I have, she got a pen now and we both writing it, okay.
So I guess, Mike, if that seems like that's acceptable to folks, then Mike has to decide whether he's willing to.
I would amend my motion to agree to that.
Okay, and are you okay with that, Ben?
I amend my second to include that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other questions, so we are ready to vote. Julie?
There we go.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. I am going to request a short break for about five minutes before we continue the presentation. So we will resume back in this room at 2:30. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Dr. Irving?
Okay. Thank you. So as we now talk about our final Future Ready Return to School Plan, it's important to note that we will return on July 30th to share with you that full plan for your approval. That full plan will include the elements related to health and safety. Whereas today, I know you have already approved things like our learning model, which also will be embedded within that plan with all of the other details to make sure that we are ready to return to school this fall. We receive many questions on our website, as well as feedback from our surveys. And all of that information has been used to help shape the information that will be in that final plan. Questions that some of our constituents have been asking. And so that will be a part of, you know, some of those frequently asked questions, as well as the protocols and elements and other things within that plan. On July 30th, when we return, we will also bring to you a revised 2020 through 21 calendar. What we are expecting from work that we will be doing with our calendar committee.
Dr. Irving, before we move there, do you mind if I chime in and support this particular?
Yes, please, do so.
Okay, thank you. Before we start discussion about the calendar considerations, I wanted to share a couple of highlights with the board and with our community members from our second parent and staff survey that provided us feedback on the calendar in the last couple of weeks. We had, again, outstanding response from our staff and our families. We had about 5,511 staff respondents, several hundred higher than the first time that we sent out that survey. And 91% of those surveys were based at school and 73% were certified employees. We also heard from 9,918 parents responding nearly 16,000 students representing those students. We asked both groups about whether they would be willing to extend winter break to keep staff and students at home during the active flu season. And the yes votes were 91% staff, 52% parents. And depends on the calendar change, 48% of staff responded that way. 37% of the parents said yes. We had only 11% of the staff say no and 11% of the parents that said no. We then followed up and asked them both about a couple of key options we were evaluating, which is the elimination of spring break. 31% of the staff were asked that and said, and then 37% of the parents, as we followed up to ask about spring break. We asked about extending the school year going into June if we needed to. 30% of the, 36% of the staff and 37% of the parents responded to that. No changes made based on other options. The parents said 32%, 26%, and the staff said 32%. So pretty much what this suggests to me is that while there is definitely support for extending the winter break, and Dr. Irving will talk a little bit more about that, and there is no clear choice amongst these significant elements for a desired calendar change to allow this to happen. So this is, again, only the survey that we did for the last time. So the reference and the complexity of the calendar decisions are going to be pretty extensive. So we're going to have to really spend some time working on this particular calendar. These are some data points that you need to take into consideration as we begin to talk about the calendar. So I am going to, I'm not sure exactly. We're kind of getting in a space where the two of us will tag team, but I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Irving. So as she begins to talk to you about what she's, what we're kind of thinking maybe, then we can begin to know you have your background data about what the survey information stated.
Okay, and just so that our audience knows, the significance of the July 30th date is that's our next school board meeting date. So that's a reason that's coming back into us, actually a week from today.
Yes, so next Thursday was already a scheduled meeting to be here. And so that gives us less than one week to gather our calendar committee to work through the logistics of what it would take to delay the start of school. Mr. Blankley mentioned earlier requirements related to contact hours. And so that is something that we have to make sure that as we are looking at perhaps making a recommendation to delay the start of the school year, we do not have an option. It is by state statute that we still have 1116, 1,116 contact hours with our students. And so that means, starting late, we will need to look at what might we be able to adjust on our current calendar to make up for that time. So the calendar committee will assemble next week and begin to work through that. And then we will come back here prepared on July 30th at the already scheduled meeting to provide a recommendation to you related to the calendar. Another significant date is August 20th. And so this is being somewhat presumptive that we might have a delayed start to school year. If not, then we will need to adjust that. But August 20th, why I say a significant date, I'm going to take us back to our decision-making guide that you have approved. We want, before it is time to officially start the school year with our students beginning the school year, to go back through that tool that you have approved and determine at that moment in time, what level of restriction are we at within our community through collaboration with Sedgwick County Health Department? And use that information at that moment in time to make a decision on what the start of school should be. Should it remain with the three options that you have approved? Because that's what we are preparing for, enrolling our students and families, or enrolling our students, but our families are enrolling. And/or have we shifted to a high-risk level of restriction? Which if so, would cause us to look at a full remote start for the beginning of the school year for all students. So that's why that date in August is extremely important as well. And then as we are just really continuing to gear up for Future Ready, I just want to put a plug in that online enrollment is taking place. We also still have our info. Families have the opportunity to provide questions and comments to our info website there. And that the place to always find the most current, up-to-date information related to our Future Ready to Return to School plans is at our WPS Returns site as well. And then I'm going to begin to wrap us up by just going over these important dates. We do have, I'll say it again, online enrollment taking place. We highly encourage families to complete our online enrollment for multiple reasons. One, it will decrease the number of individuals that will need to go to our buildings physically next week and allow only those that really need to go into the building to do so. We know we have some families that may need to actually go into the building to complete their enrollment. But if you are able to complete online enrollment, please do so. It also allows us to begin to see what are those options that our families are considering to be the best match for their children's learning style. But if going in person for enrollment is needed, that does begin next week, July 27th through the 29th. There are some guidelines that we do need to communicate. And there will be communication from the building level as well related to that in-person enrollment. One of the things that we are asking is that only one adult come to the building to complete the enrollment process, as well as, if possible, if they can come with no children. We understand sometimes that's not an option, but if it's so, that would be helpful. And the reason why. And the reason why we are asking this of our families is we are, we are required to limit the number of individuals in a space. We don't want folks to have to wait in cars to be able to go in, but we will have to monitor and limit the number of individuals that can physically be in the enrollment space inside our buildings at any given moment. That's why again, we really encourage if you're able to complete online enrollment to do so. Masks are required for in-person. So unfortunately, if you are not wearing a mask, we will have some available, but if you are not wearing a mask, then unfortunately, we're not going to be able to allow you to come into the building at this time for our online enrollment process. And we are also encouraging that if you do come into the building for enrollment, that if you have children that attend multiple schools, you can take care of the enrollment for all of your children at that one school. You do not have to go to the elementary, the middle and the high school to enroll all three of your children. Pick one of them and then enroll all of your children at the same time at that site. A couple plugs I forgot to mention with online enrollment. We know that sometimes families might have questions when they're navigating the online enrollment site. And so we do have a hotline that will be set up. It begins Monday? Yeah. Monday. And so it will be promoted through our social media outlet and on our website, but it is Our schools will also be communicating a QR code and providing that to families. So we're trying to help our families as much as possible to be able to maneuver through that online enrollment process. I'll reiterate again, July 30th, we will be back for seeking your approval for the full return to school plan as well as the calendar updates, August 3rd through 4th. This is not anything new that's on our calendar, but it is a reminder that new staff orientation begins on August 3rd and 4th. Also, August 5th is already the scheduled day that our teachers and building staff are back in buildings for in-service. And we still need those folks to be ready and prepared to come back. I know building leaders and district staff are already engaged in preparing for some engaging professional development that allow our staff to participate, social distant, distancing. And so there's lots of things that folks are planning, but teacher in-service day does begin across our district on August 5th. And then we will be back here again August 20th to review that learning model decision-making guide to determine what is the learning model that we will start school, how we will start school.
Now I'm going to bring you back to the decision. Those decisions are already on our calendar. We're moving along as planned, but the decision that's left to be made will be around our calendar. So I'm going to open it up. I've given you the data as it relates to what the survey said as a, for that. So we're looking for guidance from you as we go back to the calendar committee. So if you guys could have some dialogue and give us some feedback or directives, we'd be happy to take them.
Okay. Ben, did you pull your name off?
Yeah, I didn't have a specific question about the calendar. It was other things.
Yeah. I think as we move into this discussion, we need to give, we will, the calendar committee by, by our.
Policy. Policy. It's a policy.
Policy has to bring the calendar to us. We are all in the process of thinking, you know, when, when is the right time for us to start school? And that's the thinking that we want to have out today because we've got to give guidance to that calendar committee for them to bring that information back to us next Thursday. And then we can say definitely, we are going to start school the next day.
And I want to be clear so everybody knows, we're, we're talking about students at this time. Is that correct? I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes, students.
Okay. Because staff, we've already told.
Yeah, staff is coming back. That's already the, we're not changing that. But what we may change and what we need to give direction to the calendar committee on, they, we need to, that committee has to make sure our students have 1,116 minutes. And they also have to make sure that we stay within the guidelines of what the, what the staff has to. Hours, sorry. What the staff has to do in order to meet their contract obligations. So we don't want to overwork our staff by 15 days or whatever it is. Neither do we want to not give students the right amount of time that they have to have by law. Okay. With that said, Julie.
Well, I, I think it's important for us to understand this clarification of that we still have to have the amount of attendance hours that we had did before. So, and that's a state statute and the only folks that can modify that is our state representatives. So we have to function, we have to plan our year as if we're going to be required to have those days of teaching. So I, I understand it's a very challenging, a calendar committee is challenging even when you have a normal year. I've, I've served on the calendar committee before when I was an employee in the district and I know it's challenging to mix and match everyone's concerns even in a normal year. But, but, but I, I would like to request and challenge the calendar committee to be very creative and, for example, we can eliminate snow days because we can have in-school remote or we can have full remote learning. Get my terms right.
You're doing real good. Real good.
If we happen to have bad weather days, you know, even though we have some very important holidays like Martin Luther King and, and, you know, what else is there?
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day. I mean, those, those are important holidays. We don't want to discredit the, the purpose that we have those holidays for, but we're in a unique situation. I, I would just like to request and I don't know, maybe challenge the calendar committee to, to work really creatively and hard that we could have an after Labor Day start. I know our state school board did not, did not uphold the, the order of the governor to, to have an after Labor Day school start. However, our two representatives for Wichita, Jim McNeese and Kathy Bush, did vote in favor of the governor's order. And, and I think that we all need to understand that across our state, the, the school districts are very, very different. We have, and the, and the state school board has to make a decision for the entire state. There are, there are some school districts in our state that are just very small communities. And I haven't actually looked at the data of, of all of the counties in Kansas, but I think there's still some counties in Kansas that don't have any cases of COVID-19. So, so even though our state school board did not uphold the governor's order, because they have to look at the entire state, I think it behooves us in Wichita, even, even if the state board of education is not requiring us to uphold the order, I still think it behooves us in Wichita to listen to our medical advisors, to, to, to listen to those who, who are giving us guidance, even though it's not mandated guidance, that, that I would like for us to be able to start after Labor Day. I want to make one other comment about that. You know, Ernestine made some comments earlier about how for some folks in our district, it's very important for them to get back to onsite learning. And I, and I totally understand that and I'm totally sympathetic to that. But I also think that if we have to start the school year with the full remote learning plan, I think we're less likely than to segue back into the, into the, the, the three options. And I think if we can provide the three options, if we are in a safe environment to be able to do that, I think that's better for our entire community because it does give those folks that onsite learning is a better option for them, their family. If it's a safe place for them to do that, that if that's a better op, option for them, I think it's good to be able to provide that. And so if we delay to after Labor Day, we're just, it's just that much further away, gives that much more opportunity for, for our city to be in a better place relative to the pandemic. And hopefully, if we decide for an after Labor start date, then on that August 20th date, we don't have to switch gears and say, we're going to have to go to, to full remote learning. So anyway, I'd give someone else an opportunity to talk also, but I, I personally would like for us to, to be able to do an after Labor Day start. I think we've heard from a lot of teachers that that's their preference. I've heard from a lot of families in, in that regard. Our two, two state board officials in our, in our, in our area have, have supported that. So I, I would, I would like for the calendar committee to come up with an after Labor Day start.
Okay. Ernestine Crable?
Ernestine Crable, District 3. And Julie pretty well covered what I wanted to say, except for the fact that I think that giving us the extra time till the day after Labor Day gives the city a chance for them to do the right thing, to mask up, to start wearing masks, to know that if it's as high as it is now, we can't go back to school. So families, we want to urge all families to nag your neighbors, tell your relatives, wear the masks so that we can start school. And if we wait till the day after Labor Day, we can then begin so kids can get excited about coming back to school and having their new choice of which of these options they'll have. But it depends on what the city of Wichita, the Cedric County area is going to do. So we beg the public in Wichita, do the right thing.
Mask up.
Mask up.
Ben Blankley?
Yes, Ben Blankley, District 1. And this is a little political, but we are elected officials, so we're in that realm anyway. The state legislature leadership basically didn't do the right thing. They, they're claiming local control, but then they didn't do the bare minimum for public health that we know is needed to get this under control so we can get kids back into physical school. The state board split. I can't say how disappointed I am because an infectious disease doesn't, doesn't respect county boundaries. And all the people that are going to get severely sick are going to come here for treatment. It's just how it is. It's just how our hospital system works. So it puts us in a real bind because, you know, the claim is that we have local control, but then we have all, all of these requirements that have not been waived, have not been waived at all. So, so it really puts us local elected leaders, who are all volunteers, in a real incredibly tough situation. So my opinion about the calendar specifically is I would prefer a later start date because that would enable our staff to have more professional development and possibly, like Ernestine mentioned, our community could bend the curve down so we might be able to be in a moderate restriction kind of environment. But as, as Mr. Rode seemed to allude to, we're not currently in that kind of environment.
Not at all.
And if, and if likely, if we were to make the decision today that we will be planning on making on August 20th, we would not be in a moderate restriction scenario. We would be going fully remote. And I think that's important for people to realize is we have an opportunity here to bend that curve together as a community to see if we can get to a moderate restriction kind of environment. But I think we're, we're going to be as prepared as we can be to be fully, fully remote if, if we need to. And that's not ideal, but I think this elected body would, would probably bend that way on August 20th if we're there where we are now. So if we, if we start after Labor Day, I know a lot of people want, you know, Labor Day holiday. It's pretty, you know, every, but please make good choices. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of barbecues and a lot of birthday parties going on and I know those are fun and I know we miss them, but we need to understand that outside is better than inside. Masked is better than not masked. Washing hands frequently is better than not doing that. So yeah, find a sense of normal, enjoy the outside, but please, please try to make good choices. Cause even if we're in a fully remote scenario in, in August or September, we're still going to have to, we're still going to have people that are going to be out sick and all that and, and it's just, it's just going to be a tough fall and we all know that. So, so yeah, calendar committee, good luck. We'll be looking forward to your findings.
Mike Rode?
Thank you. You know, Governor Kelly picked the day after Labor Day, I'll get it right one of these times. And it's kind of fascinating, one of the, the comments that was made by the state board is, is why did she pick that day? And it, because it's the end of the first cycle or the second cycle behind the July 4th. So are we going to have another spike after the next holiday, which creates a problem? It was a very political move on her part to do what she did and put us in a bind. Enough of that. My next question, and I don't know if you can answer today. What does it cost us a day to run our district? And the, and the reason I ask that question is if we push the start date far enough back that we have to go into June, we go out of contract with our teachers and then we'll start paying for, for additional cost. And, and I don't know if we have that number or, a good close guess would be happy with me.
Yeah, we have, we have our expert. Come on down.
Round numbers.
She says I can't count, so I'll let her.
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. So if we needed to buy an additional instruction day, just teacher salaries would be about a million to a million and a half a day. Full kind of across the board of the district, we're looking at closer to, to over $2 million a day. Rough, rough, rough numbers. So it's expensive. We would encourage the calendar committee to look at more creative options than adding additional instruction days because of the sheer number of additional costs we're already having to experience, we're probably not going to be in a position where we can buy additional days. And I will put, since I'm up here, my plug in for online enrollment, particularly the free and reduced application, that is going to be extremely critical, no matter what option a family chooses, whether it's onsite or my school remote, because that particular application drives our at-risk funding. We absolutely need that form filled out. Right now, I think there's 250 completed. We have closer to 37,000 at-risk students. So we need that form. We're going to have to put a big push out to get the, that, those enrollment processes completed, particularly that, that piece of information that we need.
And that free and reduced form, if you would stay here for just a moment, if, what if a parent, because we, we have some parents who've already enrolled, but may have failed to fill out that free and reduced form, what do they need to do to be able to go back online if you've already enrolled and you know you, you need to fill out that free and reduced form because you forgot that one? What do they need to do?
I believe that form, you can go right back into the website as far as the enrollment website and get right back into that app, the, the process and you can fill out that application right there online. It did just come online last week. That, that particular form is late to the game as far as the online enrollment process, but it is available and it is online right now.
Let me follow up one little bit. You said 1 million for teachers and 2 million, would that be for total staff?
The staff that are not already in place, right?
But that doesn't include HVAC?
There is a whole, right, there, that's just salaries.
That's just salaries. Okay. So $2 million a day is what it would cost us to play the game in June. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Ron Rosales?
Yeah, so if we do September the 8th, Tuesday, will that be our soft launch, or can we do our soft launch the week prior, which would be August the 24th?
So, what we would need to do is look at what the calendar committee is recommending as the start day for students to return, and then build our soft launch from that. So, the first step before we can say when soft launch, or what soft launch would look like, is first looking at when we would-
Can you talk louder?
We would need to look at first what the calendar committee recommends as the first day that students return, because that's the week the students would be in session, and that's when we would plan our soft launch, so we wouldn't have students come before school begins.
Yeah, because I would think that the soft launch would be a very critical time. Like everybody's expressing, you know, you might have a parent that might want to do online and then change their mind, and vice versa. And also for new staff coming on board, there's, I don't know how many new teachers that are going to be joining, but they definitely need the time. And I, I'm just looking at September the 8th, if we go back full school versus soft launch. And it might save some days, like Mike was alluding to earlier. Just an idea.
I noted. Stan Reeser?
Thank you, Cheryl. I move that we respect, oh, hang on, I move that we, yeah, I move that we accept the governor's recommendation of starting schools after Labor Day, direct this to the calendar committee on Tuesday, report back to us a week from today to adopt the final calendar with the understanding that we could not afford to go past the normal ending date and incur the extra expenses.
I second. Okay. We do have a motion on the floor, but there are still a couple of people that want to speak, and I'm one of them. I, I, I've been taking informal notes over here about where we are. All of us got, I stopped counting at 250, but I'll bet I got another 150 emails after that yesterday. So, in the last 24 hours, I've gotten that many emails, strongly encouraging us to start after Labor Day. I think there's a lot of reasons why that's a good idea. It is going to play havoc with our calendars, and we do, by policy, take this back to the calendar committee, have them bring us the calendar. That's the reason we won't vote on a calendar today, but we will next time. With the motion on the floor that we start after Labor Day, and my question is, are you thinking September 8th or September 9th?
In my motion, I would accept, accept or expect the calendar committee to either recommend the 8th or the 9th.
Okay.
I would like to leave that open and so that we don't paint them in a box.
There's, there's lots of good things that can happen with the added time for our staff. This is not a normal year. Every single one of us has said that. And our staff's going to be doing things that they wouldn't normally be doing before school starts. We're going to be asking them to get in-service on COVID, so that they're sure they're doing things right when the kids come back. We're going to be asking them to figure out how to distance their classroom. We're going to be asking them to commit whether they're going to do remote or in-class teaching. Then we're going to ask them to put together lots of work and things that will help them with that remote teaching, because it's different to teach remotely than it is to teach in-person. And we're also going to probably be asking them to help us with the difficult students that have trouble enrolling, to be able to find them and get them in, because every student is important. We want to lose no one, particularly this year. Never do we want to lose kids, but this year it's critical that we have them all back. And parents are going to be confused, no matter how many times we as a board meet, and no matter how many times we say it, it's going to take some one-on-one contact, and our staff can help us do that. So, having that extra time at the beginning of the year will be extremely well-used and very important. So, I am glad that we are holding tight to August the 3rd and 4th for our new teachers, then starting all of our staff on August the 5th, running until whenever the official start date is. And we do have a motion on the floor to recommend to the calendar committee that we start either September 8th or 9th, based on what they can work out to be able to meet the parameters of 1,116 hours for students and the obligations for our staff.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's what my motion was.
That's the motion on the floor. Ernestine?
I'm not going to say anything because you just said it all, but really, we're going to need that much time for parents to learn how to help, I'm thinking particularly those young elementary, to use those machines that we're going to be giving to everybody so they can do their assignments. That's all.
Okay.
Thanks for putting that motion on the floor.
Ron Rosales?
Yeah, going back to what you said about emails, I appreciate everybody sending all the emails, and I just want to express that, really kind of being humbled by them, but at the same time, a little bit irritated. And mainly because as a teacher, we need to have trust, and believe me, we've been hearing all the emails. But here's some people being very disrespectful to the staff, and also this lack of trust, okay? And at the same time, a lack of trust of whatever, you know, cleaning the place, the survey, whatever, and at the same time, they're asking us to do a matrix. Doesn't make sense to me. So, I just want everybody to understand, we hear you, and Dr. Thompson's team is working to make sure that we can get back on track. So, we need some cooperation, and I would urge all the teachers to show some respect to the board members and the people who are working at this. Because the next thing is for us to, and I'm saying us because I'm a teacher, and I can't wait to get back in the classroom. So, I want every, I'm just asking the teachers to use some discretion when they're sending their emails, and please be cooperative. We're not here trying to, and I, I even got this in one email, somebody was saying, you're going to commit genocide. We're not going to do that. Okay, yes, we understand the severity of the situation, but please have some trust. Okay, and, and as, again, from a teacher's point of view, I know, and we all trust each other, and we, and, you know, you trusted somebody when you went to Dylan's, or to Walmart, or whatever, and you came out, and we, we all functioned, and we all went to our jobs, or, you know, hopefully we're going to work. But anyway, President Logan, I just want to make sure I hopped on that because, on one hand, we do really appreciate all the feedback, we really do. But on the other hand, we need just to have some, a, a level, a standard that we all as professionals have towards each other. Thank you.
And some grace as we work with the calendar committee and have to make some very, very difficult decisions about what to do. So, there is a motion on the floor, and I think we have no more comments, so I'm going to ask you to vote. The motion was made by Stan and seconded by Julie. Please cast your vote. We will be requesting that the calendar committee look at either September the 8th or 9th for the first start day of school. With that, is there anything else? Dr. Thompson?
Cheryl?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to, I, I don't know if we've done a really good job today of clearing up the confusion we may have added to it, I'm not sure, but I just want to summarize real quick. Number one, we approved three learning models for families and students to choose between. Number two, we accepted guidelines to determine if and when we need to close school buildings. Schools will, schooling will always take place, but we may at some point have to make a decision based off these guidelines on whether school buildings are closed. And third, we will reopen for our students after Labor Day and accept the recommendations from the governor, and we will then use that extra time to train our students' family or, and accept or, and, and train on the situation on safety, and possible making sure any time spent on remote learning is meaningful and robust. I just thought perhaps if we summarize that as, as easy as possible, and if anybody's tuning in, hopefully that would make it a little more clear.
Thank you very much. Ben Blankley?
Yes. First, I wanted to, about 2:00 PM, wanted to give a shout-out to Elmo, who was showing us how to wash hands on the livestream, but then it was switched back to our board meeting, so the video recording will be complete. But yeah, shout-out to Elmo. The second is that I had a question from a constituent about when secondary course offerings for my school remote will be available, because they are avoiding decisions based upon whether their child may be able to enroll in this particular coursework or not.
I'm glad you asked that. I failed to mention that during today's presentation, and so it is important for our families and students to know what courses are going to be available for my school remote so they can make informed decision when deciding the choice of learning scenario that's best for them. The secondary courses that are, that will be offered through my school remote, we are going to be updating that on our, I'm never sure, enrollment page, our enrollment page, so our families have that, and then we're going to make sure that our schools also have that as they are working with families with enrollment next week as well.
So, so that would happen like next week, that, that families would have that, have that information?
Actually, hopefully like today. So, it's-
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Julie?
I, I just want to remind you again, President Logan, I think I've said this at the last two or three board meetings, but on July 30th, I'm going to have to attend remotely. We're, I'll, I'll be, I'll be phoning in from Colorado, so I want everybody to know that I'm not, not here because of the pandemic and the physical presence. I will be joining remotely.
And that's wonderful, with our new rules where you can still vote, that's, it worked quite well. We've been doing it for a while, so thank you for letting us know. Okay, I want to thank the board members, all of you. This hasn't, these have not been easy decisions, and everybody keeps passing it to somebody else. Well, we're, we're where it stops, and we've made decisions today that can get our kids back into school safely, and that can tell our teachers and our parents what to expect. We're not quite done until we get that calendar, but at least we know it's going to be after Labor Day when we, when we bring kids back, and we know our staff is coming back at the normal time, and we'll have literally the month of August to do the yeoman's work that's going to be required of them. So, and, and you all have been willing to step up at the plate and make those hard decisions, and I am very proud to be a member of this board. Thank you so much. Dr. Thompson? Oops, one more, sorry. Ernestine, I apologize.
Two days ago was 150th anniversary of the starting of the city of Wichita. So, I think it's just, I've said this before, but to me, it's really kind of a history-making dramatic thing, that 150 years to get the school district that we had as of June, well, no, as of March. And now we, for the next 150 years, we're doing the whole new thing, and I'm just real proud of us, and I think on the anniversary plus two days, it's appropriate that we look and congratulate the Wichita Public Schools and our families and our 50,000 students as we launch into the, the new beyond. That's all.
Okay. Now, Dr. Thompson?
Actually, Mr. Reeser did my report for me, so I appreciate him for doing that. And so, with that being said, I am, I've concluded my report through Stan Reeser. Thank you, Mr. Reeser.
I move re-adjourn.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn by Stan Reeser?
Second.
It's seconded by Mike Rody. Please cast your votes. Motion passes 7-0. We will see you one week from today, here in this room, at 12:00 noon, for the next round of information that we need to be able to get school started. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Including the budget.
Oh, yeah.[1791.30]